I'd like to say good evening to everyone. Welcome to the board meeting here at DeJohn Middle School. This is June twenty, June twenty ninth, regular board meeting. And we will start, we'll open up with the pledge allegiance and then we'll do the land acknowledgement. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance. Now, we had a land acknowledgement.
We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenyo, Moicma, Carcun, Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you. And now we about to go into closed session and once again, welcome to these board meeting this evening. But before we do, the board is here to receive public comments on any closed session items that is agendized. The board would then adjourn to closed session and reconvene in open session to continue with the regular agenda at six thirty P M. If you are attending the meeting in person here at DeJohn and you wish to make a public comment now on a closed session item, you will need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak. If participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone, there is no using a time to another speaker and there is no substitution of speakers permitted. Please finish up the orange comment cards now. If you are here in the audience and you wish in the audience, you are in the Zoom or attending by phone, please get in line to speak by raising your Zoom hand now. To access translation, the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available by Zoom by clicking on the globe icon of the button the bottom of the screen. Due to the brown app, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Please know that the order of business may be changed without notice. Now, may I have the roll call?
Thanks, sir. President Christian.
President.
Trustee Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Good afternoon, President.
Trustee Reckler.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm present.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, President.
And trustee Phillips. She's not here at this time. So we have four board members present, one absent. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. And now we will proceed on. Now we will go to public comment disclosure items to be discussed in closed session, government code five, four, nine, five, seven, dash, seven. And we will go into closed session, but before, are there any well, actually, the let me just go back and make a clarification. In closed session. Okay, in closed session, liability claim, conference labor with negotiation, public employee appointment, public employee performance evaluation, public employee discipline dismissal release and 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 that's we go into closed session. Are there any?
There's no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. So now we will go into closed session. Thank you. I'd like to say we're going to extend the closed session just for just a little bit longer. So just want to let everyone know. So stay tuned.
We have to offer time because it's not that you're extending the closed session, it's that the regular session has to start. Uh, what time will we start?
Ah.
How bad is it?
Be recessed for six forty-five. Do I hit the gap or does? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will start shortly. Sorry, we're still in closed session, so we will be back in at seven P M. Thank you. All right. I'd like to say good, good evening to everyone and um, welcome to the board meeting and sorry um, for the delay. Um, and we just returned from closed session. And now we will continue with the open session of the Wednesday meeting of the regular board meeting of the West Country unified school district. To assess translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available in the Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen crisis, the manner in which the Board of Education meeting are conducted has changed. Thank you for in advance for understanding corporation as we experiment with new ways to conduct the people business while allowing the maximum participation and adhering and hearing uh to our values of respect and safety for the community. We have changed the public comment format, which now occurs at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for no more than one hour in case any agendized and non-agendized item. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. We are about to start public coming, so if you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit an orange request to address the board from form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. Please finish those up and those to hand hand those cards into staff to a staff member now. If participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone, there is no yielding of time nor substitution of speaker permitted. If you are making a public comment from Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand now.
President Christian put over there. Um, we have to do our report out from closed session. We have to do a report out from closed session.
And then we would do a report out from closed session. So we do a report out now from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, three subdivision C three, the board provides its oral summary of the amendment to Dr. Kenneth Christian Hurst Superintendent contract by way of the pending amendment to his employment contract with the district. The annual salary and benefits to be paid to the superintendent under his existing contract remains unchanged. Paragraph nine of the agreement is amended to permit an extension of the evaluation of the superintendent for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year only to be completed only before August the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Also, regarding agenda item A six point one, the board voted to reject the claim presented on behalf of B. Massey dated five, twenty-five, twenty twenty-two related to alleged property damaged. The vote was as follows. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Phillips is absent. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. President Christian, yes. We also have the following report out. Principal of adult school education will be Mr. Mancing did pass as follows. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, yes. President Christian, yes. Trustee Smith Folds abstain. Chief Business Officer, Dr. McIntyre is approved as follows. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, no. And that concludes my report.
All right. All right. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. And now we're about to go. Now we're about to go into public uh comment and do we have any uh cards for in inside in-house first?
Yes, our first first, our first public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, I F T E Local Twenty-One S S A Chapter President. Um, so far, so good. Everything has started out for our summer sessions fairly well. Students, teachers and staff seem to be working well together and I'm very happy attendance is being taken, so woo-hoo. That is a positive for all of us. But I am here because I would like to give my condolences to the Gutano family. Joy Gutano was an employee of this district since two thousand. She was one of the biggest heartfelt people in the Nutrition Center. She was a member of S S A. She also dedicated her time and efforts to the children and the staff of this district to make sure that everybody was taken care of. She always reached out to us in S S A to make sure that we knew what was going on, if somebody needed a little extra attention. Um, and just to say thank you. I would like to make sure that her family and everybody in the Nutrition Center um has a big hug and we really will deeply miss her. I don't know how else to say it, but West Contra Costa Unified School District employees and students will miss her efforts and dedication deeply. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Gustavo Aguilara.
All right. Good evening, board superintendent, staff. Uh, my name is Gustavo Aguilara. I'm a parent, community member of the W C C U S D family. Um, there's two items that I want to discuss. It's E two and E six. Um, if you reviewed your previous uh unaudited actuals, eighteen, nineteen, your total expenditures were three hundred and seventy-nine million. Nineteen, twenty, three seventy-seven million. Twenty twenty-one, three hundred and eighty-five million. And your estimated actuals for the current year, you're estimating four hundred and sixty million. Um, that's a big jump of nearly eighty million. So with reviewing your budget and the way you um adopted today, take a look at those numbers. Um, I strongly feel it's inflated, but that's just me. Uh, and then I I believe there's a typo in E six. Um, the salary, the management salary schedule for the associate superintendent for step four, it's actually two hundred and twenty-one thousand. And on here, there's a increase of eighteen thousand that should make it to two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, not two fifty-one. Um, unless something was negotiated, then then maybe um that should, you know, be modified, but in the current management salary schedule, um, step four is two hundred and twenty-one thousand eight ninety-eight.
Our first public comment on Zoom is Amy Aldridge. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Amy Aldridge. I'm an older adult teacher and I'm reading you a letter that is from one of my students. She tried to send to you today. With difficulty, she passed it to me. And here's what she has to say. This is about current and permanent funding for older adult education. I am a senior living enrichment and have for many years benefited from the wonderful programs offered through older adult education. The relatively recent uncertainties imposed on these offerings is of great concern to myself and others in this important and inevitable phase of life. For those of us lucky to keep accumulating years and who wish to take advantage of opportunities for maintaining good health, it is urgent to provide permanent funding for our community of older adult education. I strongly urge the board to access the funds already in place from Measure X and eliminate the uncertainty. Uncertainty, while prevalent in our culture today, is harmful and unnecessary for growing healthy children and for growing healthy older adults and ultimately for a healthy community. In particular, I support the very important physical fitness classes taught by Amy Aldridge. The recent practice of defunding programs and not rehiring teachers until the last moment places an undue burden and onerous undue and onerous burden on these teachers and ultimately on the well-being of we see elders who are taxpayers of many, many years. Please inform me what stands in the way of accessing the existing funds from Measure X and providing a permanently dependable and consistent program. Is it appointing a liaison to carry out the paperwork or what? A concerned and perplexed senior, Marilyn Hallard, Point Richmond, California. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Linda Minner. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Sorry, I was pushing the wrong button. The short comment about the older adult program, I am a teacher at West Contra Costa Adult Ed and an adult, older adult as well. I'm seventy-eight. And I know from teaching and being involved with activity that keeps me alive. It keeps me current. It keeps me involved in life. Um, I think the older adult program is integral to the older adult population of our district. Because if older adults don't have that integration into society, into social interaction, they become I I want to use the word debtor. Um, they become inactive, which is really, really detrimental. So I encourage, um, that's all I have to say. I I encourage uh funding for the program. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Zalon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. Thank you guys all for coming out tonight to care about the children. I am here just to thank some of you board members and I want to call on the rest of you to support the Black Students Resolution. We do need to look at that and see why haven't that, hasn't that been brought up? And I, we don't see a lot of how that's in the plans of the future or any spend spending in the budgets. Um, and if we're not seeing, it's usually not something that's going to happen. And I think the focus needs to be brought back to the resolution and how the board is going to support um, the superintendent and the rest of the parents and the teachers and educators on implementing the resolution. And what does our role map look like? I feel the board members, um, all of you guys know about the resolution and I feel that it is you guys' duty to support us in ensuring that black students have equity in education and using that resolution to do so. So thank you. That's all.
Our next public speaker is Kokoi. Please unmute yourself and state your last name for the record.
My name is Kokoye Sanday. I'm a Richmond resident and a longtime older adult school student. This past school year, I participated in the Strong Bodies Stay Young Exercise Class, which met twice weekly. Some history. I had knee replacement surgery in two thousand and seven and recovered well because of the strength and flexibility I had developed due to my exercise classes. In twenty seventeen, my broken ankle sidelined me briefly, but I returned to my exercise class as soon as my physical therapist okayed it. When I learned there was a possibility once again that all older adult school program funding would end, I was disheartened. I responded to this news by joining with other seniors to make sure that didn't happen. I wrote to my Richmond City Council members and all the West Contra Costa Unified School District trustees. I'm especially grateful to you, trustee Leslie Reckler, for your thoughtful responses to my emails and your ongoing support for older adult school programming. I understand two teachers need to be hired as replacements for the upcoming school year. Won't all of you please begin the necessary hiring process right away? I ask that you, the entire board, do all in your power to ensure older adult school program remains free for all of us seniors. Why? It's the right thing to do. And if you're lucky, one day you too will be eligible to participate in the older adult classes. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Linda Kane. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, uh trustees and superintendent Hurst. We appreciate you listening to us. I'm Linda Kane. I live in El Cerrito and I participate in older adult classes. Um, I'm asking for your support to make sure that there's a budget line item for prefern, preferably permanently funding the adult education program sponsored by W C C U S D. The programs at St. John's, Christ Lutheran, Sakurakai, and the older adult physical ed that's taught by Amy Aldridge. These programs contribute greatly to the mental well-being, social interaction and physical health of members of our West Contra Costa community. It's a credit to the school district that you co-sponsor the educational programs. We wish that you would always do it more willingly and faster than you have, but it's important that you do it and you get recognition too. We don't want to take away from the kids. We love the kids too. We, our parents, our grandparents, we're neighbors, we're voters, we're citizens and we, we deserve some respect. Older adult education is for people who have contributed and continue contributing and are continuing to be educated and get smart. Um, I I saw that there was something in the line item budget from Dr. McIntyre about funding for us. I was kind of unclear exactly where it is. I want to make sure that it gets in the budget, that it gets approved by the majority of trustees. We thank you for all of your help and service and please, please fund us and please fill the two positions for the teachers that are missing. Um, we look forward to your help. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening and happy summer. Okay, so first thing, um, got an email from the lead architect, person who's leading the reimagining of Kennedy that uh we were supposed to be on tonight's um agenda, but we're being postponed. And so I know the district has many, many duties and responsibilities and timelines and things of that sort. Just know that some of us have been around a long time. We've built some trauma feeling triggered that once again, we are being postponed. And so I just wanted to share that because of the decades-long um things that have been going on with Kennedy over the years. I'm trying to choose my words very carefully. Second thing is um, I'm teaching summer school. I'm at Deans with our severely handicapped students and I know we have a new acronym, but I'm still working on adjusting to these new acronyms. And so what I want to say, thank you to my colleagues who chose to take the summer off. That is a really hard job to do for over one hundred and eighty days. I'm only there for twenty days and every day I get off of work, I am exhausted. So I just want to say thank you to even the staff at Deans, who is a regular staff, um, helping support me and supporting and working with the kids as well as the age. And I invite district leadership to come on through the campuses. Um, as well as board members to come and see our students and how they're doing with summer school. Y'all know me, I'm all about young people meeting people who are in leadership, introducing themselves and it doesn't matter what their abilities um, are on that different scale of um abilities. So um, I pray everybody have a wonderful summer. I look forward to seeing some of you on our, or at least at Deans. Um, so that's it for tonight. Take care. So that's it for tonight. Take care.
And our last public speaker for tonight is Linda Grunhofer. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. And that concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who gave public comment this evening. And now we will proceed on with the meeting with the agenda. And now we'll go to the agenda review and adoption. Item E seven. Item E seven has been pulled. Item E seven. And any other for the on the agenda review? All right.
President Christian, I'll move that we approve the agenda with pulling item E seven off.
All right, it's been moved. Second.
Reckler will second.
Second, trustee Reckler. And so now we go to the vote. Trustee Smith Foal?
Smith Foal, yes.
Clark Gonzalez Hoare?
Gonzalez Hoare, yes.
All right, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
All right, and I'm a yes. All right. And so it carries. And now we will move on to approval of minutes of March ninth, twenty twenty-two. Motion?
I'll move to approve the March ninth minutes as presented.
Smith Foal, second.
All right, it's been moved by trustee Reckler, second by trustee Smith Foal, and to the vote. Trustee Smith Foal?
Smith Foal, yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez Hoare?
Thank you, I'm a yes.
All right, thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
All right, thank you. And myself, it's a yes. All right, thank you. And now we will proceed on. And we have a resolution tonight, resolution ninety, twenty-one, twenty-two. Do we have somebody to read that?
Thank you, President Christian. I'd be happy to read. Now therefore be resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education declares the month of June as Immigrant Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education directs the superintendent and all district staff to support lessons and activities that engage students in meaningful learning, research, and writing about our immigrant students and families.
All right, thank you.
And President Christian, I will move that we approve resolution number ninety dash twenty-one, twenty-two, Immigrant Heritage Month in June of twenty twenty-two.
Smith Foal, second.
All right, it's been moved by trustee Gonzalez Hoare, second by trustee Smith Foal. And now we go to the vote. Trustee Smith Foal?
Are we doing comments, sir?
Yeah, we, yes.
I want to make sure that we understand how important it is that we honor our immigrant heritage community or immigrant community. And we do that by making sure that we have policies and procedures that don't create barriers. We have newcomer programs in the district and we need to make sure that those newcomer programs are inclusive and that they are making sure that we're hitting the cultural differences and highlighting the cultural differences and the needed resources for our immigrant community to feel as if they are part of WCCUSD. So I just want to make sure that we are inclusive in our thinking when we're developing policy and procedures. That's it, President Christian. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And are there any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, President Christian. I just wanted to do a quick shout out for our internationals program at Richmond High and Helms that hosts a lot of our newcomers from the secondary sites. And I did want to share, I hope that, you know, Dr. Hearst, we continue to strengthen our procedures for elementary students who are new immigrants. I constantly hear from our sites that they have a newcomer student or teachers that have newcomer student, but sometimes they don't have the tools or the or the means to support them because they might not speak their language. So we have to have find a way to to provide either those tools to the classroom or be able to transfer those students to a place where they will get those tools for support and language. As you all know, I was an immigrant to this country two decades ago, which makes me feel really old, but two decades ago. And I didn't have those tools. And honestly, that's the reason why I'm standing here because of advocacy for lack of tools for the students that I taught and saw in our district. So I just wanted to put that that piece that we have to continue to push that label for future for future years. Thank you. And I think progress is that we have an ELD curriculum, which is amazing. Thank you to Ms. Martin's staff for for doing that work. And we just got to continue to push that. Now that we don't have transitional bilingual education, we have fully dual immersion. How do we now support the one the students who are not in that program as well? Right? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
President Christian?
Go ahead.
Just to add on to what trustee Gonzalez Hoare said, and it's not other students' responsibility, Dr. Hearst, right? It's not the other student in class who happens to speak Portuguese. And now they have to become an interpreter or they have to, that's not their responsibility. We as the district leadership need to make sure that that newcomer student, for example, who speaks Portuguese, has the resources that they need and not depend on another kid to do it. We see that often too. That it becomes another student's responsibility in that school or in that class to do it. And that's a lot of, that's a lot for a kid to be able to do. We also see it when we're talking about our students having to translate for their parents, right? So there's all of these nuances that we have to really keep in the forefront of our minds when we're creating programs and policies and procedures. So thank you, trustee Gonzalez Hoare, for your expertise in this area. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, let's vote. All right. Trustee Smith Foal?
Smith Foal, yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez Hoare?
Gonzalez Hoare, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
In honor of my grandparents, I vote yes.
Right, and I am a yes. So and it carries. And so so now we will move on to the C. The business items, consent items.
President Christian, I move that we approve the consent items.
All right, is?
President Christian, I would like to pull C five if I could.
You say you want to do what now?
I want to pull C five for discussion.
C five?
Yes.
Okay.
So President Christian, I'll move that we approve the consent calendar with C five pulled for discussion.
All right. C five?
Reckler will second.
All right, it's been second by trustee Reckler. And now we go to the vote, right? All right, trustee Smith Foal?
Smith Foal, yes.
All right, thank you. Clark Gonzalez Hoare?
Gonzalez Hoare, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. And myself is a yes. All right, and now the consent calendar was adopted. And now we go into the superintendent report.
Thank you very much, sir. Ask if staff could pull up that report, please. We would like to start off with a memoriam. We can go to the third slide, please. We'd like to thank Ms. Chamberlain for already coming up and acknowledging Ms. Joy Guinto. We also wanted to share on behalf of the district, Ms. Joy Guinto, Food Services Coordinator, passed away. She worked for the district for twenty-two years. She was an incredible mom, a friend, and mentor with incredible passion and energy. And our thoughts go out to the family and friends in the loss of their loved one. So we wanted to acknowledge Ms. Joy Guinto. Thank you. And if we can go to our next slide, please. So I had the opportunity also to visit oops, wait for that to come back up. Had the opportunity to go to all of the graduation ceremonies. In one particular ceremony, there was a student Andrea Pena, and I thought it was worth sharing with the board and those who are listening in the community and able to see this remarkable young lady who is signing a speech and she had an interpreter also that was sharing a speech as she was signing. And one of our deaf students. So we wanted to make sure that we shared this incredible video with everyone. So if we could just pay attention to her speech, we'd appreciate it.
Hello, class of twenty twenty-two. When I first came to this country from Colombia.
Can we turn that up, please?
What to expect? Everything was different and new, whether it was people, culture, or teachers. It was all so different, but I was excited to learn and get an education. I already knew Spanish and Colombian sign language, but I had to learn ASL and English. Being the only deaf person in the entire school was hard. But I had teachers and interpreter. And I was able to make some friends. Learning both English and ASL at the same time, I needed to use Google Translate and to help me. I wanted to immerse myself and learn this new American deaf culture that was so different from my experience in Colombia. I was able to go to the School for the Deaf in Fremont and to Deaf Expo. And I met the deaf model Niall DeMarco and deaf dancer Antoine Hunter. I learned how to interpret songs from Spanish to English to ASL. And here in America, deaf culture is embraced and celebrated. I know I can become whatever I want in my life. There are no barriers. I can go to college and pursue my dream of becoming a photographer and learning more English and Spanish and ASL. I want to thank Pinole Valley for educating me and giving me those experiences. And thanks to my family for supporting me all my life. I would also like to thank my teacher, Ms. Layman's, my tutor, Ms. Richards, and interpreter, Ms. Melby, because I know they will always be there to continue to support me. Thank you so much for your help. To the class of twenty twenty-two, I wish you all the best for your futures.
We wanted to share that with you. We've seen a lot of remarkable students in our district speaking. And again, congratulations to all of our graduates, twenty twenty-two. But we wanted to make sure that you're aware of this remarkable young lady Andrea Pena as well. And if we can go to the next slide and before we play.
Hello, class of
So we wanted to, hold on before we play that, we wanted to share this video presentation with you as well. And what you're going to see is clips from our strategic planning session and a number of the families and schools. Now, I just asked you the key in on the conversations, the passionate conversations that are happening related to mission, vision, and also our core values, strategic planning process. So if we can go ahead and play that, please.
Of the educating of the children is a stronger bond between their guardians and them. I believe we've gotten away from that. And maybe on this side of the pandemic, because parents had to go in and deal with their children hands-on. Hopefully, that is a area that's been strengthening.
One of them is to make our sites learning communities where we can value what the expertise that our teachers have so that they can best support our students.
I would say more targeted support groups and mentoring groups specifically for African-American and Black students. Across the district, I feel like Black students perform at far lower rates than their counterparts. So I feel like also hiring more staff that students can relate to.
He was very aware that through distance learning, there were people that actually thrived and students that actually thrived because it forced, like one of our other group members said, it forced creativity.
We'll tell you what what the condition of the school tells them about how we feel about them, that there's no soap in the bathroom or the food is nasty. But people don't listen. We need to hear, listen, and then act is really what, you know, and let them be part of the decision-making and not be afraid as adults to say, we don't know, we made a mistake.
We can really take advantage of what we found out during the pandemic. I know from the people in this panel, we're talking about how we are using online schooling, how Zoom office hours and different flexible methods of teaching were really able to be introduced over the pandemic. And now that we're in person, we can really take advantage of those resources.
Opening up the possibility post-pandemic to maybe having one asynchronous day a week where maybe on Wednesdays you did teaching and learning from home that would give teachers the opportunity to have Zoom office hours with students one-on-one time.
So a couple of the parents at our table were talking about how awesome it was when they could see their students through the classroom. They know what kind of work they're working on in all the classrooms and to see their own students or children take ownership of their learning.
In my experience with elementary and middle school, I wasn't really informed of different diverse perspectives in our community. So I went to Fairmont Elementary School, which I think is probably one of the most diverse elementary schools that is feeds into the El Cerrito High School system at least. And I even in our community, we weren't introduced to diverse perspectives.
During this whole pandemic, there's only one thing we've been using, just technology. Not a lot of us knew how to use it, students or teachers. We were all trying to adapt and that caused a lot of problems.
As a site leader, I have a responsibility then to say, well, give us access, right? And so I think on the other side of this is like highlighting those inequities that you were talking about. But then also, how how can I use my privilege and my role to give us access to things that we've never had before?
We made a survey and sent out to the El Cerrito High School population. Yeah, we made a survey and sent it out to the El Cerrito High School population. And we got over nearly six hundred responses. And the bulk of these responses were telling me and telling me to advocate for the district that advocacy and transparency and the needs of the students are what has to be met. And even though this is just for people on this panel, this really represents a lot of what our community wants.
No, she said that it's interesting to her that in our society, there's a group of people who are allowed to think big, and then there's other groups of people who aren't, like the moonshot video people, like they're allowed to think big. And we have kids who basically can't read.
And we're setting them up to not, I'm sorry. To the, as to that, we're setting our kids up to not be able to do that, to not have the tools to be able to think big and dream big. And we have to redesign what we do so that we can do it right by them.
If I was just looking at that, you have different kind of learners. So if I was just looking at that, I didn't see myself in there. Because you had a white man talking about doing something that's never been done. And where do I sit in that? Where do I see myself in that? Where are the words that represent my people in that? We're gonna do something that's never been done. So I didn't feel that we gonna do something. I think we gonna do it after they figure out what they want to do, and then we can maybe be a part of. And so I don't see myself being in that, let's do what's never been done.
When I say, when I think of we provide education, I mean, like we're telling, we're giving the knowledge, and I don't think that's what we do. I think if we're building an experience that's hands-on, that's discussion, that's field trips, right? Like, it's a holistic thing.
We offer everybody, all the, we always pigeonhole it into college. And it's like, college is not success. I mean, that's why I do like the gain-for-employment thing is, to me, they need to know when they leave this building, at least kind of how to make money.
So then how do you shift that paradigm and make just that part? I've never seen that in six years. I just want to say that right now, so I'm stuck on this. So how do you make that true that we provide the highest quality education to enable all students? How do you make that true?
I think that this educational system that we currently are trying to survive extinguishes the passion that's naturally there. Right? So it's, I don't believe that it's our job as a school system to ignite the passion. I think the passion is there. It's our job not to extinguish it.
We were all kind of holed up in our houses for a really long time, and then they were expected to hit the ground running. And the schools were struggling to figure out what this new dynamic is going to be. And it kept changing with testing and what was happening with the state that they didn't have a chance for a breather to kind of check in. And their expectations in school were from what they were supposed to be doing as if it was normal. They weren't given that opportunity.
Well, if we had, we know we can teach hybrid. So what if we could truly expand our offerings at the district? So where if a class isn't offered at one school, a student could virtually enroll in it at another school? That we can have some kind of flex periods where students get older and show more responsibility. And we did ask students to be very responsible for their own educations during COVID. And they learned to be responsible. And I think that's part of the problem that they've had in resocializing, coming back to the building, is all of a sudden they have rules again, right?
At no point has it ever been more necessary to support students' social, emotional well-being. And that's something that filters through the entire school and with all the stakeholders.
Thank you for bearing with us for that clip. And if you go to the next slide. I wanted to share with the board and the public the importance of the conversations that you just witnessed. And all of this is leading to the strategic plan. Long step, long process. And I've shared this with you, the community meetings that we've had over the past several months. And now we're to the point where we are, I really wanted to engage with the community with a survey. And you heard me talk a lot about a focus on a vision, focus on the mission, and focus on core values and graduate profile. So I'll share with you that the meetings were passionate, and you heard some of that this evening. But you also heard them talk about our future direction. And you heard me talk about goals, and that's what the strategic plan is about, and that's why it's so important as well. This process is going to provide clarity for our district, for our community, for our students. And then we'll also have goals, and we'll be able to measure progress toward our goals. We do have a survey that's been developed. That survey is going to go out to the entire community. And you will have the opportunity, or our community will have the opportunity to participate by looking at all of the mission statements that have been put together, the vision statements as well, and the skills that's going to be part of our graduate profile. That survey will go out very soon to our entire community and will get feedback. Our intention was to bring some of those artifacts to our board this evening. But taking a step back and understanding that we wanted to get more input on that survey, what we have decided to do is we're going to bring back that information from the entire community back to the first board meeting in July. At that time, I will be outlining the entire process and timelines as well. And I'm just back up for a second. So I've mentioned mission, vision. I talked about graduate profile. But you've also heard me talk about things like the core values. And we really want to do some work around not just core values, but equity core values. We really want to do a lot of work also around our equity statement. And also, we want to do work around our anti-racist statement. I'll talk more about this during the July thirteenth board meeting. But what we're doing is we're looking at organizations that's going to help us to do that work, to engage in the equity statement work, to engage in an anti-racist statement, also in equity core values. We're looking at several organizations. Those organizations are being vetted through our guiding coalition. And once we have that organization, then that organization will dive right in and help us with that work that I just shared and the work throughout this upcoming year around equity. So that will be a clear focus going into this year. But like I said, at the July the thirteenth board meeting, I'll outline a path that's going to get us through a timeline of finishing the strategic planning process. And I'll be able to go over with the board and with the community step by step. Here's the next step in our process for completing the strategic plan. So I wanted to share that piece with the board and with the public. That concludes my report. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. And thank you. And now we'll continue on with the agenda. Now we go to E, the action items. And so we have the first one. Adopt twenty-two, twenty-three local control accountability, Dr. Hurst.
Thank you, sir. We have our Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Martin, and also our Chief Business Officer, Dr. McIntyre, that's going to be presenting on that item.
Good evening, Board, family, and community. I am here today. We have the LCAP for twenty-two, twenty-three on the agenda for approval. However, we are also going to spend some time going over some items in the LCAP and each program as requested by the board at our last board meeting. I do have some of my team on the Zoom with us, so they will be presenting some parts of this as well. Our first slide. We go to the next slide. So we have our three district goals that guide the planning, achieving students, thriving employees, and caring schools. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Board and community. I'm Shakira Reynolds from Family and Community Engagement. We wanted to discuss briefly how we got community input on the draft plan. We did do a survey in partnership with state and federal. A hundred and one community members responded. We sent it out in English and in Spanish through the Communications Department, as well as by email to all members of the parent advisory committees. And these are the majority, the most important areas lifted from the survey, which were early literacy, safety, teacher recruitment and retention, increased instructional staff, particularly to reduce class sizes, implement more SEL, mental health and intervention services, and multi-tiered support services, and an increased focus on programs and services for high-need students, wraparound services in community schools, and increased academic and trade program offerings, as well as bringing back the program for gifted and talented students. Thank you.
So I just want to name in LCAP, one, goal one. The actions and services included in LCAP goal one are career tech ed, college and career pathways, African-American, Black students, English learners, literacy and intervention programs, visual and performing arts, special ed students, foster and homeless youth, program evaluation and monitoring, international baccalaureate programs, and school-based programs in the school plan for student achievement. We'll go to goal one, which is internationals and newcomers, and our director, Isaul Orozco, will present the slide.
Thank you. A quick recap of our budget and spending for this past year focused on contracts. Now, earlier today, the internationals network contract was mentioned in terms of one of the core elements of supporting the newcomer programs, in particular at the middle school and high school level at Helms and Richmond High School. Some aspects of our newcomer and international budget and program support this year that were not able to be implemented was the elementary teacher component. This wasn't due to the lack of want. It was due to the need of finding a teacher to fit that role. For that reason, in this next coming year, we will still provide that space to find that teacher and build out the elementary newcomer programs throughout the district. Furthermore, that budget also contains aspects of finding supplemental resources that, but upon already are Title III resources as well of support students at all levels, K-12 throughout the district. As you can see, part of this programming includes an additional counselor that focuses really on having these conversations, personal, social, emotional, and connecting to college, A through G academies, and all the avenues that we have in our district in terms of the social, emotional, and legal support. Next slide. Another aspect of goal one is dual-language immersion. Dual-language immersion has grown quickly in our district in the last couple of years. And we are embracing it and reviewing it as we speak in terms of how to budget it for the next year. Our specialist, Marianne LaFoss, could be as well on board. And if not, then I will be presenting this slide. I go back. I can present that slide. For dual-language immersion. Thank you. There are teacher stipends, dual-language immersion instruction. Does take more time in terms of planning. We are teaching multiple languages. And this is both for the Spanish and the Mandarin classroom settings as planned for this particular year. PD has been established, and we're currently exploring also contracts in terms of how we can align our services for teachers and for students. I see that Marianne has now joined. I believe she's here. She has a vast experience of knowledge, being a parent and instructor of DLI. Let me just cover this last space, Marianne, in terms of our pathways and our exploring how we spend our funds. In terms of our instructional materials, we have ours. We previously spoke about the ELD instruction as being a key component of that balancing of dual-language immersion schools, where we have English learners and English-only students. But now we're also exploring now how to spend our budget in terms of DLI-specific materials that expand our students' knowledge in both languages, English, Spanish, in this case also Mandarin. Marianne, did you want to add anything to that particular slide?
Yes. Good evening, Board members. As Isaul stated, you know, there was, the teachers receive the stipends for their extra planning that requires working with two languages. And they also receive extra time for attending after-the-school PD. One area that is needed is creating and identifying a clear articulation between the K-12 DLI programs. In particular, reviewing the language and time and content allocations through the grades, making sure that we have materials in that particular language as stated in the time and content allocations that was created about two years ago. And also, there is the need to analyze how the programs are doing, or the DLI school, identify the needs, levels of support, and actual levels of student performance. And for these, you know, it requires attention and it requires, it's a process that we need to get started next year. And for next changes to the program, the teacher stipends will continue as well as the professional development and the instructional materials and supplies. I'm going to pass it on to Isaul.
Thank you, Marianne. I think we're ready to go on to the next goal. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board and community. I am pleased to present on Goal One, College and Career Programs. This is the first of several that are related to college and career programs. This is category eleven-twenty. This category really pays for a lot of teaching positions. Unfortunately, due to the staffing crisis that we saw statewide over the past year, several of those, those teaching positions were either vacant part of the year or all of the year. So we did have several vacancies that remained on this category throughout the year, which is unfortunate. But despite that challenge, we were able to see database increases in students who received their UCCSU credits, also known as A through G requirements throughout the year. We didn't meet our goal for the number of, or percentage of students obtaining an AP score of three or higher. But we did see progress. We just didn't meet that 2% goal. Moving forward, we're going to include additional teachers for academies and pathways to still continuing to, continuing to invest in teaching positions via these funds. It's also really important, I think, to mention that for every dollar that we spend on college and career pathways, we then can utilize those funds as matching funds when we apply for grants with the state for college and career pathways programs. So typically, those, those state-based funding programs require a two-to-one or a one-and-a-half-to-one funding model. So for every dollar we fund, we can request fifty cents in funding from the state as well. So this, this is actually a really impactful programming funding stream. And I think I'll see you guys later for a couple more slides.
Next slide, please. There we go.
All right. So this is Program eleven-twone, Academies and Pathways. Here, too, we definitely follow what was, was intended for LCAP goals for the past year. This funding stream is much smaller than the previous funding stream, and it really provides for, I would say, support, program support for college and career pathways. So everything from supporting pathways to order materials and supplies needed to ensuring that. um to ensuring that we are doing all of our required reporting on time. Um, for our database progress, we did see that at least eighteen percent of students completed at least one CTE pathway as measured by the college and career indicators. Um, and we also made sure to include the new indicators um in twenty-one, twenty-two, which disaggregated by student subgroup. Moving forward, we will be adding a K through twelve instructional specialist um to support implementation at our continuation high schools. Um, we're going to include bilingual support for our college and career pathway programs, extra hours um to support programs, some subscriptions for student learning, as well as materials and supply support for these programs.
Good evening, board. Uh, the next section is goal number one, Educational Services Programs, Executive Directors. Uh, the focus of these actions and services are specifically designed to meet the needs of school site teachers, site leaders, and students. I first want to start with a recap of the implementation and spending for the twenty-one, twenty-two academic year. Uh, first, we had STAR reading for math. And uh we use these assessments across the district in grades two all the way to ten. Stipends also were provided for department chairs to facilitate content-based planning sessions and attend IOT meetings, coordinate department activities, and provide feedback on department master scheduling needs. The update on database progress is as follows. One hundred percent of district schools use STAR assessment three times per year to identify academic needs and support student growth. The changes that we're looking at uh to the program for twenty-two and twenty-three, where we'll be shifting some of the funds uh for the next school year in order to align support, retention, and capacity building of district leadership. The additional funds are going to be coaching for principals and executive directors, as well as professional development for principals and executive directors. Contracts for professional development, study trips, materials and supplies for professional development, light refreshments for meetings, conferences to support professional development and program administration will also be funded to ensure program success and to ensure improved outcomes for students.
Our director, Kristy Resignio, is out on vacation, so I will be presenting for her. Um, for recap of implementation of spending for elementary school support for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, um, we followed what was intended for the LCAP related to this area, but they were not fully able to implement several components, including staffing and use of contracted services. For twenty-one, twenty-two, we were unable to expand all the allocated funding due to staffing shortages and inability of existing staff to fully implement all contracts for teacher training and student support. Update on progress without all vacancies field, it was difficult to make progress in these areas. Changes to program for twenty-two, twenty-three. The program will be enhanced by extra time for professional development to improve instructional practices, contracts for instructional support and PD, materials and supplies to support student learning. We're paying for elementary prep teachers out of this fund, instructional aides, administrative support staff. Preschool program support will be included for twenty-two, twenty-three in order to align program activities. Literacy supports for three high need sites in the form of a contract for family literacy programs and intervention tools and learning for those tools for TK teachers will also be added. Next slide, please.
All right, let's talk about secondary school support. So this funding stream was really utilized to add additional school counselors to our secondary school sites, including our K through eight schools. Um, but just like you heard me talk about earlier, we were really impacted in our ability to fulfill our intentions here by the lack of availability of staffing. Um, so we had vacancies throughout the year that remained unfilled. Um, and so we were not able to provide the level of school counseling services that we had intended. We do intend to maintain those positions and hopefully fill them moving forward, as well as to include class size reduction teachers to support increased learning opportunities throughout our schools.
Next slide. This is early goal one, early literacy support. Programs, activities in this section um are directly support student growth um for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as part of the LCAP program for early literacy. For twenty-one, twenty-two, they also follow the intended LCAP goals. Um, in addition to the existing focus areas for this early literacy fund, we are purchasing, they are purchasing Spanish literacy intervention materials for DLI sites to address ongoing needs. Update on database progress. AMOs were met in relation to building on existing capacity of teachers in relation to literacy instruction. The work continues as we add more new teachers next year. Changes to program twenty-two, twenty-three, the program will be enhanced by adding by additional staff to support professional development, intervention for students, contracts for PDs, materials and supplies to support response to intervention will be included in response to the annual data review. Next slide, please.
The next slide is in regards to English learner support. Uh, in, in particular, uh, the budget is always protecting a teacher professional development for English learners and their best strategies for learning, as well as materials. One aspect that is often forgotten about English learner support is all the people behind the programs. One is LPAC and assessments, and all assessments that connect with reclassification. And that takes a lot of people power. As you can see, there are nine roles. Uh, this wrap-centered team really does it all in terms of assessments, in terms of interpreting and translation services of when we're not able to provide you full-time interpreter. And as well also uh in terms of monitoring. Once again, these are required items that enable us really to identify English learners, what they need in terms of our systems and our, and our, on our mandated report systems for the state as well. Uh, furthermore, what we're doing next year, which is, which will be different upon parent recommendation and deck, uh, DL cap, is professorment for parents. Uh, so we want to involve parents through these cycles of inquiry in terms of what kind of interventions are being done for English learners, what new materials are being shared in the classrooms, and how they can improve and support LPAC uh testing and learning in the classroom and on top of what's going on in the classroom. Next slide, please.
All right, so for visual and performing arts, again, this is largely related to staffing for our visual and performing arts programs district-wide, including and especially those very critical um performing arts uh teacher positions at our elementary schools. Um, you can see that one hundred percent um of, pardon me, I, I don't believe that this is the correct information for the database progress that should have been uh put here on this slide. But I can tell you that uh moving forward into twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, the plan is to continue to augment those positions, especially in our elementary schools. So one example would be where we have a point eight, so just, just a percentage of a person's time. We're really looking to be able to make that a full position so that that person can be dedicated to that site.
Good evening. My name is Martine Blake. I'm here representing family and community engagement. And for our fit and foster program, LCAP funds one staff person, our fit and foster liaison, to support the development of systems and capacity building and our partnerships around fit and foster. This year, um, for our funded fit and foster programs, we launched several pilots, some including um intensive support of our community school directors to embed those partnerships into our care teams to ensure that our students were quickly resourced upon being identified. We also led training for our office and clerical staff to support them with quickly identifying our students um in Power School, knowing that that's a con- um considerable funding source for our fit and foster families. We launched a identification platform on K-12. We also launched a referral form on K-12 for our sites to make referrals to central level resources. And so through those, those systems, we were able to pilot um two new programs or two new partnerships, one with California Educational Partnerships, um, which is a tutoring and case management service specifically for unhoused families. And we were also able to pilot our new um housing agency partnership with Hope Solutions. So this year, we were able to also gauge and assess our capacity to serve fit and foster with the current funding that we have in place by monitoring the number of interventions offered and students serve their needs um as well as the outcomes of each of those partnerships. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, we plan to enhance those partnerships um with our learnings from the data to provide additional support to more sites around quickly identifying students, implementing a warm welcome process so that students who are identified and just given the transient nature of this population, they're quickly like welcomed into the school and made aware of all of the resources, including enrichment, that's available to them. Thank you.
As part of goal one, it's um also included in the LCAP that we have effective evaluation and program monitoring. I think for the recap of implementation of twenty-one, twenty-two, um, we followed the intended goals of the LCAP. Um, there was an attempt to actually review data, do analysis, and program implementation. Um, update on data progress by looking at the data sources we do have available to us. We did not see significant increase in outcomes for our students. We did review STAR, our attendance data, suspension data, um, and any other data platforms that we utilize. Program changes for twenty-two, twenty-three, we plan to increase expenditures to staff to support data, budget and program plan, planning and implementation to ensure the highest quality programs are put in place to ensure staff and programs are able to meet students' needs. Next slide. Goal one also includes us um ensuring that we're providing funds to schools for their SPSA. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, we did follow the intended um goals of the LCAP. There were a wide range of program supports um that our sites provided and received additional supports for SEL, for contracts. Um, but due to staffing shortages, we were unable to fill many positions. There were items, there were a shortage of materials, and many items that were backordered. Programs and funding for school sites will continue at the same level for twenty-two, twenty-three. Again, in terms of our data, by looking at the data sources available, we did not see increase, significant increases in outcomes for our students. Changes to program for twenty-two, twenty-three, we plan to continue providing funds to school sites to support their efforts for student achievement aligned to the work and the AMOs and the LCAP as described in SPSAs. No changes will be made to this program in order to ensure that sites continue to have the opportunity to address on-site goals aligned to LCAP AMOs. Next slide. This is for OASHA Director Will McGee, who is not available. We have a recap of spending for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, the intended outcome was really to support reading intervention programs to strengthen tier-two support. They were able to implement tutoring and homework assistance through Mafanikio at ten schools. Students had access to Zion Learning and online tutoring services. Many students also received seven hundred and fifty hours of online tutoring free. Many of their expenditures included um in-person and online enrichment of the Mafanikio Academic Coaching Program, materials and supplies for students, incentives, incentives for students. We partially expended our funds, not all contracts were approved, and positions hired, also again due to staffing shortages. By looking at several data sources such as STAR, um, their Mafanikio program, the attendance, and their coaching program, they did see moderate growth on STAR. Based on program changes for twenty-two, twenty-three, um, the plan is to review their expenditures and implementation of services to continue to hire positions to support academic achievement of African-American students. They also are going to implement and hire ten academic support providers um will be added next school year to really support with early reading intervention. They also have money set aside for study trips, subscriptions for students, materials and supplies, uh, light refreshments for PD, for staff, and summer contracts for students, and equity training will be added as well. Next slide, please. This was um a goal, goal one was academic engagement for students. Uh, this was in the LCAP. This program was intended to provide opportunities for students and families to engage in STEM nights and science nights at schools across the district. Unfortunately, COVID restrictions made the implementation of these types of activities and gatherings almost impossible, so no funds were expended. Um, update on progress, no funds from this um program were expended. And due to budget restrictions and the need to align and focus resources, um, this program was, will, will be eliminated for twenty-two, twenty-three. So the funds from this were actually moved into other programs. Next slide, please. For LCAP goal two, which is on thriving employees, this is on ongoing actions and services regarding professional development for classified and certificated staff, recruitment and retention of staff, professional development programs by the Office of African-American Student Achievement, e-learning support and salary increases. Next slide, please. There was a program called Code for Teacher Salary Increases. Um, it's listed as me, but it was not actually with me. Um, it's really held centrally, but due to a variety of factors, West County Cross the Unified School District was unable to fully implement this item for twenty-one, twenty-two. The funds were not spent as intended. Update on database progress, despite the lack of full, despite the lack of full program implementation, I apologize, district salaries remain relatively competitive. Changes to program for twenty-two, twenty-three, for twenty-two, twenty-three, the amount available for this program has been reduced to allow for greater expenditures in programs with direct support to students. Next slide, please. I'm going to read this one as well. This is um goal two, professional development classified training, which is with our director, Kristy Resignio. Um, this is for twenty, recap of implementation of spending for twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, we did not hold professional learning for classified staff. Reflecting on our past year, we know that there were no professional learning sessions held for classified staff. We're planning to hold these sessions as well as utilize the funding for supplemental literacy intervention tools for the classified staff during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Update, we have posted positions for TK aides and look forward to hiring these crucial team members in support of early learning. Changes to program for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, we followed what was intended. Um, and for twenty-two, twenty-three, the program will include additional training and instructional materials for prepared professionals who will provide support for early literacy instruction across the district. Next slide, please. Teacher recruitment and retention support. This is also listed as me, but this is really, um, this goal is intended to support human resources. Recap of implementation and spending for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, the expenditures were high, um, our expenditures were, were higher than initially anticipated because stipends for residency programs, program support staff were added. This program supported National Board stipends to encourage teachers to engage in reflection and professional development to improve instructional practices and engagement of students. to encourage teachers to engage in reflection and professional development to improve instructional practices and engagement of students. Update on progress, in conjunction with grant funding, we supported fourteen new special ed residents with tuition and mentoring in order to increase the number of special ed teachers to serve our students in the future. Changes for twenty-two, twenty-three, um, the program will include increased support of our teacher residency program, which includes stipends and tuition fees. In order to better align program support for specific initiatives, National Board stipends will be shifted to federal Title I funds for twenty-two, twenty-three. Next slide, please. Goal two, practices for African-American student, um, support and success teacher support. So this is really directed with OAS working with HR, uh, recruitment of African-American teachers. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, um, the focus was on recruitment of Black African-American employees and support retention strategies. Reflecting on our past year, we were able to provide support to BEN, Black Educator Network, create the Teach Today enrichment program and support HR. We're receiving a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for teacher pathway and creation of partnership with Holy Names University. For twenty-one, twenty-two, our expenditures included purchases for supplies for professional development, conferences for professional development and expenditures for teacher recruitment and retention. We partially expended our funds, not all contracts were moved forward. COVID nineteen proved challenging as key staff were placed in classrooms. Update on database progress. There needs to be more work with HR to look at retention rates of our Black and African-American educators. There's more support needed to really do targeted recruitment of African-American employees. Um, and we need to really look at our retention strategies to address the academic needs and recruiting, uh, teacher efficacy in our district. Changes to programs, we intended, we intended to follow the plan, plan. Based on our review of the expenditures and implementation of services, we intend to more fully implement our plan to hire positions needed to support the academic achievement of Black students. Next slide, please. Gabe is not here. He is also out. So I will do goal number two, Director Gabe Chilcot, e-learning support. He's in charge of this one, but this is really around ed tech, uh, department. And, um, ed tech department continues to provide hu- crucial support. There is nothing that is changing for the program for twenty-two, twenty-three. However, we did add other instructional support materials such as Mystery Science, Typing Agent, Newzella, Overdrive eBooks and Desmos. Next slide, please. LCAP goal three, caring schools overview. This includes ongoing actions and services for African-American students and families, additional vice principals to support school climate, support for community engagement and outreach efforts, support for parent training and volunteers, additional social emotional learning programs and full-service community schools. Next slide, please. Again, this one is for practices for African-American student support and success. So this is really geared around parents and how we're supporting parents to be engaged. For twenty-one, twenty-two, we intended to increase parent guardian engagement to increase the number of schools that had APACs, African-American Parent Advisory Councils and availability of workshops, training for parents. Reflect, reflecting on our past year, our parents and guardians would like to have more leadership training and training on race and equity. For twenty-one, twenty-two, our expenditures included purchases of workshops, conferences for professional development and expenditures for training. We partially expended our funds um, due to staffing shortage, shortages and resulting delays in program implementation. Update, um, there was, the team looked at their sign-in sheets and attendance at meetings and the use or the amount of parents that opened their newsletter and they felt that there was engagement from our African-American families. However, we believe that there is more outreach that needs to be done to gather more parent engagement and ensure we have more of our African-American parents involved. We have updated program changes to program twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we have updated the plan and will hire additional staff needed to support the African academic achievement of Black students. We plan to make the adjustments to our processes for posting, hiring and moving for open positions and will review and improve our procedures to ensure that all contracts needed for program implementation move forward in a timely way. Next slide, please. Goal three, vice principals and assistant principals. This is under Director Gabriel Chilcot. The recap of implementation and spending for twenty-one, twenty-two is APVP budget was used to fund assistant and vice principals at secondary schools across the district. Staffing shortages across the district impacted the availability of staff to fully fill these positions and serve in a vice principal role during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Update on data. Site administrators are a critical component of educational leadership in relation to instruction and safety at our schools. Changes to program for twenty-two, twenty-three, this program will continue to fund the APVPs in twenty-two, twenty-three. The site leaders will continue to have monthly meetings led by ed services in symmetry with principal meetings. In order to ensure that schools across the district have the resources needed to support programs for students, three additional roving administrators will be added for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I also want to add that we actually funded more APVPs, uh, this year than last year. Next slide, please. I'll turn it over to Director Marin Trujillo.
Good evening, board. Um, so I'll give you a quick recap of our student recruitment and retention efforts. Uh, early outreach, live phone banking and tracking our efforts is one of our ever-evolving best practices to increase the completion of the multi-purpose family income form, vaccinations. Um, we continue to be doing, uh, do that this year. Um, this year, we started providing tier-three support centrally using one of our community partners. Uh, but it was difficult to get traction because although willing and able, the agency, there was just not enough time to build relationship between all of the schools that we had targeted. However, we were able to increase training to our frontline staff on using A2A and begin to create more cohesion with frontline staff on how to address chronic absenteeism and use our, uh, chronic absenteeism platform, A2A. In terms of database progress, just like other districts of the state, we continue to struggle with low attendance and high chronic absenteeism rate. Changes for next coming year, uh, we believe that our tier-three, uh, idea is a sound one. Uh, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna narrow the scope to fewer sites to increase the ability to that agency, increase the relationship with students and families at those sites. Uh, we will add three scows centrally to help with, uh, doing ongoing outreach, uh, work. Although our work is cyclical, there's always something that comes up and we need to always remain ready and, uh, and quickly be able to pivot and adapt to the demands. And that's why we believe that this is one of the strategies that's gonna help us do that. And finally, uh, we are embarking on a much better way, I think, of doing parent-to-way communication by bringing in parent square. Uh, we hope that this will reduce the number of logins and login fatigue and increase our ability to do two-way communication. I'm complete.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Um, I'll be covering parent university and volunteer support. In terms of our recap for implementation and spending for twenty-one, twenty-two, we were able to implement fingerprint parties and continued background checks for volunteers to provide translation and clerical support for each of the parent advisory committees and their meetings. Um, but what we heard back from our community and parents and guardians is that they would like more training on engagement, practices for collaboration around student learning and, um, parent leadership in general, including, uh, budgeting. And for twenty-one, twenty-two, our expenditures included a consultant to pay for supporting family engagement during the coordinator vacancy and also a consultant contract for compliance, family engagement timeline and a contract for our volunteer clearances. We were only able to partially expend our funds due to the long vacancy in our department. So in terms of our database progress, by looking at our volunteer demographic data, we were not able to achieve our goals around improving and increasing volunteer diversity. We did not use the staffing funds to support parent advisory meetings or leverage school community outreach worker overtime. All of our parent advisory meetings were on Zoom this year. Um, by looking at our sign-in sheets, we saw a decrease in central level pack participation. We've made, we have maintained the rates of diversity in our volunteer database. And, um, we've seen, as, as we said, we've seen less participation overall at central level packs. For our changes to the program for twenty-two, twenty-three, we will, um, uh, based on our expenditures as well as parent feedback and our family engagement plan, we plan to hire another central staff member to support and monitor site SPSA compliance as well as family engagement, compliance and recruitment and planning and offer more capacity building to site leaders and staff around best practices for quality engagement. We also will be having tools and training to support high-quality family engagement and increases to contracts to support our program goals will also be added for twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm complete. Thank you.
I'll read this one for goal number three, Director, um, LaShante Smith for Positive School Climate, Social Emotional Learning. Um, she is out on vacation. Recap of implementation and spending for twenty-one, twenty-two, for twenty-one, twenty-two, we focus on the need, uh, for mental, social, emotional, behavioral health for our students. We intended to increase administrative support for SEL, psychologists and program materials. Reflecting on our past year, we have started to build out a centralized mental health support team with the addition of school-based social workers. In addition, we purchased K-12 SEL curriculum and have, and have added a position to deepen the implementation of positive behavior supports and intervention on our campuses. For twenty-one, twenty-two, our expenditures included SEL curricula purchase, SEL school-wide risk screener purchase and addition of support staff for school climate. Some of the training needed could not be implemented and contracts were not approved in time. It was also difficult to hire support staff amidst of mental health staff shortage. Update on database progress. Data demonstrate, that demonstrates that there is still disproportionality in subgroups related to suspension, African-Americans, students with disabilities and foster youth. Changes to program for twenty-two, twenty-three, based on our review of data, we plan to hire the additional staff, including behavioral support staff in order to ensure that we meet our program outcomes. We will also provide training to staff at school sites and add additional SEL curriculum. Next slide, please.
All right, for full-service community schools, we did implement our community school strategy at twenty-one sites as planned. Nineteen of those sites were led by lead agencies, community partnerships, and two of those sites were led by internal district staff. This work also includes the expansion of community school coordination to Dejounte Middle School this year as well as Hercules Middle School. We also provided support services for Helm's Middle School by way of a partnership with Contra Costa Health Services, um, Hercules High and Hercules Middle School. Just given that although they have a low UPP or unduplicated pupil population, we know that there are still high-needs students there, um, that need additional support. So we wanted to make sure that we resourced all around. Um, reflecting on our past year, so looking at, um, our updates on data in preparation for the community schools grant, um, we initiated a survey to community at the twenty-one sites, um, that are currently implementing community schools. And we did an assessment around how well we implemented the four pillars around community schools um, that were provided from the state. And with that feedback, we learned that, and we also held eight focus group, eight focus groups. So with that feedback, some of what community asked for was more alignment between student and family engagement, um, in relation to updates or seeing their feedback actually be implemented and reflected in our strategic planning, both at the site level through our school, school site plan, um, development and monitoring as well as centrally through the development of our LCAP. So based on this review of data, um, we plan to deepen engagement next year. And we know that in order to do that well, um, we need to also increase our staffing capacity at the central level so that we can be boots-to-ground and onsite, um, to provide actual support onsite. So we will administer stipends to youth voice leaders at secondary sites to encourage more sites to implement youth voice practices with, um, a universal curriculum, staff to monitor implementation and provide support of implementation of the community school strategy. Um, and contracts to support programs, program goals such as program evaluation and sustainability and things of that nature. And with that, I am complete as well.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we'll go to questions. Quiet, does others want?
I don't have any questions, President Christian.
Uh, motion.
President Christian, oh, Trustee Smith falls as a question, same with Trustee Reckler.
Trustee Smith falls.
Thank you so much. I do have some questions. Um, what is being done at departments to recruit for these open positions? Not just relying on HR or Ed Joint. What is being done department level to go out and look for and how to fill these vacant positions? Because each department kind of has their own network, right? You know, people that know people that know people that know people that are able to have, have a skill set that you may be looking for. So can you, can someone speak to what's being done at department levels to recruit for these open positions that we heard about tonight?
Hi, Trustee Smith falls. I will say that we are, um, currently, we're getting ready to ha- host several hiring fairs. And at those hiring fairs, we are going to be hiring for all positions, so not just teaching positions um, or principals, but also our classified staff and any vacancies that we have across our departments. Directors are also, there's a sign-up for directors to also come and be responsible for a table to also support with the hiring of staff, um, for their departments. I can let any directors also answer if they'd like to around just efforts they've done for recruitment on their end.
I'm not seeing or hearing anyone, so I'm gonna go to the next question. Um, we are rich in community when it comes to the various languages that are spoken. How are we reaching out to the community? How are we using? How are we developing skills inside the community to ask, use, help? Um, the community feel like, hey, come in and use your skill of being bilingual or trilingual. We have so, we are such a rich community in language. How are we using that to our advantage? How are we asking for help with the community?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to that in terms of our interpreter translators. Uh, as of last year, we also have achieved, uh, translator interpreter who has begun to make those networks, especially with, uh, Contra Costa Community College, which is a direct place where we believe we can find some interpreters, not only in Spanish, but of all languages. We do have some criteria for interpreters in terms of, uh, building that capacity. And we're also looking toward our, our students for coming back, uh, with university degrees, uh, in terms of recruiting interpreters and translators. Um, currently, we're also exploring the role of finding full-time interpreter tools. Um, these networks take time. At this time, we're, uh, we've teamed up with the Special Education Department for using all translators on board in order to be able to receive, uh, or give, uh, interpretation and translation services to more students more frequently and more efficiently.
Thank you so much. Um, the next question is, do we, as WCCUSD, show up to community events and set out a table or a booth? Ms. Martin just spoke to having, um, at our career fairs, having departments come out and make, or hiring fairs, having departments come out and set up their table. I'm speaking more of community events like Juneteenth, like the Fourth of July, um, celebrations that we're having during the summer, like the, uh, National Night Out that a lot of our cities celebrate in August. Do we set up tables, recruitment tables? like the uh, National Night Out that a lot of our cities celebrate in August. Do we set up tables, recruitment tables, information tables? Um, enrollment tables. Do we set up tables at these events to try to engage the community and say, hey, this is what's happening in the district. This is where you can sign up to be a participant. Parents, this is what it looks like. Here is how you sign up to be on the S S C and the A P A C and the E L A C. And this is, do we drown our, our community in information at these community events? That's the question.
Um, great points and all things that we are definitely working towards currently. Um, H R only has one recruiter. Um, and so with one recruiter at many of these events, I think that's um, something that we definitely want to work towards. And I think we need to really strategize um, as a district and as a, as departments on how we actually do that better. So that it not, is not just on H R when we have uh, openings across the district. Um, and that's, that's really what we're actually working on now. Um, so currently, no, I know there has been efforts, there have been efforts in the past to go out to colleges that have had graduations um, and other events in the community, but I do not believe that is consistent per se. Um, and so I think we need to really define how do we make that a consistent part of strategy for recruitment um, and strategy also to engage community and families um, in partnership with the district and just say like, this is what's going on and being out at those events. Currently, that is not necessarily um, always the practice um, that I've seen so far. But that's something we're definitely working towards.
And I think it's a benefit because at the Juneteenth celebration in Richmond, Mandarin School, the West County Mandarin School had a booth. They had a booth set up and they actually walked in the parade, right? That's one of the schools at our district that chose to do that and to get their name out there to make sure that people know about them. I'm asking, how can we do that? And Mr. Chahilio, I see you shaking your head. You kind of in agreement with me. How do we do that district wide, right? How do we say these are all of our schools in the district? This is how you can enroll. And we have this amazing TK program and we, how do we do that? And one of the ways of doing that is to go out to where the people are, right? We can't expect the people to come to us. We have to go out to the people. Um, so thank you for acknowledging. My last question, and I will put subsequent questions in an email. My last question is, roving administrator, can you tell me about that?
Trustee Smith fold?
Yes.
Yeah, um, our political territory to say, you know, we, we gotta keep things moving. So we gotta.
Is there a time limit that we're instituting for board trustees, President Christian? Is there a time limit or a question limit that we're instituting?
Yes, traditionally for questions.
Okay, so if that could just be told to me in advance, I would be able to kind of pick and choose which questions. I will put the rest of the questions in an email. If I could just have the answer to what is an a roving administrator? Then I will be complete.
All right, thank you. Uh, we go to trustee Reckler. You, you have a call.
President Christian, is that question gonna get answered?
Oh, um, what was that again? Uh, trustee Smith fold?
The last question I had, because I did not uh, understand that you're implementing a question limit. What, my last question is, what is a roving administrator? Can someone explain to me, we, uh, Ms. Martin, or Ms. Martin, you spoke to, we're having three roving administrator positions in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Can you explain to me the roving administrator position?
Okay, yeah, uh, it's it's gonna be email to you. It's for questions.
We really should establish a not just a traditional four, but is it, and then have it announced at each meeting. Is it four questions? Or is it a, a time limit that each board member has for asking questions? My recommendation is always time limit. However, if you, your custom is the four question.
All right. Also now we'll four questions and, and let, let's stay to four questions in this. Uh, trustee Reckler.
Okay, thank you. Um, so first, if I don't get a comment period, I just want to say thank you very much for this extended um, presentation. And I really, really appreciate it. It sets the tone for the entire year. Um, so the first question is, this week compared to last week, are there any major changes in this document?
No, there are no changes.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next question is on funding. So this year we're rolling up to fifty seven, two, no, I'm sorry, this year we're rolling up to fifty five, nine. Last year it was fifty seven, two. Right? So there's a decrease of about a million, one point two million, something like that.
Thank you for the question. The decrease is actually slightly more because of declining enrollment. But because we had a slight carryover from this year to next year, we have to include that. So it would have been a little over a two million dollar drop had there not been carryover from the current year.
Okay, and what's the total of this year?
The total this year is?
If I add up this forty point five plus nine point five plus five point nine on this.
The total for this year is fifty six million, one hundred and forty nine thousand, four hundred and sixty nine dollars. And that will be revised when we have the final L C F F factors from the state uh, in the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you. Um, finally, is the Mandarin bus in here? The low income portion of the Mandarin bus?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
The funding, the low income funding portion of the Mandarin school bus, is that in this?
It, it's actually in the S R funds, not in the L cap.
Okay.
But it's my understanding there may be some further commu- discussion at the board level about that coming up.
But at this moment, it's in S R.
Correct.
Okay, I do have a comment if I'm allowed to make one.
Are there any other questions? All right. There's no other questions. Um, we have a motion.
President Christian, I move that we adopt the W C C U S D twenty twenty two, twenty three L cap as presented.
All right, it's been moved by clerk of others on this way. Is there a second?
Reckler will second.
Reckler's second. And now, are there any comments? Trustee Reckler.
I do, I have a comment. So first, thank you for all of this. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for the expanded graphics. Thanks for the inclusion in this man, in the budget. All of this is great. Um, it, it, it is so important, and this L cap sets the tone for everything else. So I really appreciate, appreciate the time and the effort, the presentations, all of it is, is extremely important um, for transparency and understanding uh, where you guys are driving to. So um, I, I offer a deep thanks. Um, the one thing, I, I don't want an answer right now, but it's just a comment. Um, you know, how many times did we hear that things didn't get implemented because there wasn't staffing? And that should be everybody thinking about that. We are in a global issue with staffing and with work and with workers and with changing jobs and especially hitting education and the healthcare sectors. And so really deep thinking, I mean, I've said this to Dr. Hurst before, you take out that junk drawer and you dump it on the table and you think of every idea that you possibly have to get people interested, retained, attracted, and working in education. So uh, that should be the number one priority uh, above everything else because this is a people business. Ninety percent of the revenues are spent on people. That's, it, this is, it will never be replaced by machines and technology that of course will supplement, but it's the connections that we make with each other in person that drives this work. So whatever I can personally do, I'm happy to do, but that should be on the forefront of every person's thinking. Um, no matter where, no matter what position you hold, and everybody needs to be working on this. Um, for more, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? Trustee Smith fold?
I think one of the things that uh, we need to make sure is that we are clear and transparent when it comes to everything that we're including in the L cap and what we are doing when we cannot meet the necessary goals. I'm gonna turn the, I'm gonna use my comment time to just continue with some of the things that I wanted to highlight. Um, in my comment, I wanted to highlight about our, the vice principal positions and what sites they are gonna be at. I wanted to highlight that if, if we don't have any more people, if no people come, because this is every, and every part in the L cap was people heavy. We were unable to do X, Y, and Z because we didn't have the people. If no people come, what will be the result? We can't still be next year saying we didn't have people. If we don't get people, what is plan B? What is plan B for not having hiring vice principals? There's no people. What's plan B for not having counselors? There's no people. What is plan B for not having uh, social, emotional, paraprofessionals, aides? What's plan B if those people don't come? Because again, we cannot be in the same spot next year without movement. Um, I do would like, I do want to look at when we say things like the three highest needs sites. If we could mention those when we are writing plans, so they will uh, be clear to the public in the community and to the board who we're talking about. Or what schools, what school sites we're talking about, or if we don't know what matrix we're using to determine that they are the most high, or they are the highest need. Um, I do want to also make sure that when we're talking about college and career, that we are putting an emphasis on all types of careers, which include the tech, the technical careers, right? The trades, the trade uh, schools that we that we talk about in the district, but do we have the resources and the support behind those programs that we mentioned? Uh, thank you so much for the um, more in-depth presentation tonight about the L cap. And I look forward to us again having those plan A, B, and C if the people don't come. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? If not, then we go to the vote. All right, start off with trustee Smith fold.
President Christian, it's actually um, it's present, it's uh, President Christian is also, it's actually Mr. Phillips' turn this week, not mine. Because we skipped him a couple of weeks before, just so you're clear about with the vote. Would you like me to go ahead and go, or would you like to go to president, or would you like to go to Mr. Phillips, President Christian?
Yes, I got you. So uh, we get back in the order. All right, um, trustee Phillips, and then we'll work our way through and with the vote.
Yes.
All right, thank you, trustee Smith fold.
Uh, trustee Smith folds. Upstays.
All right, um, clerk does not so.
Gunsales, so yes.
All right, thank you. Um, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. And myself is, yes. Motion passes. And now, we go to E two. Dr. Hurst.
Guess that'll be Dr. McIntyre.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Hurst, uh, Board President, Board members. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Uh, there are no substantive, substantive changes to the uh, district's budget, uh, which was based on the May revision, and we will have a revision coming in the, in the coming days for you to represent uh, the, the changes that were made between the state and the governor, the legislature and the governor in the final budget act. But as the budget's presented to you tonight, it's consistent and, and it's essentially in the same in all respects to what you uh, reviewed on June fifteenth. So there's no further presentation.
All right. Are there any questions? No, uh, trustee Reckler?
Thank you. So we had a public comment tonight about inaudited actuals. I don't know if you want to address that now, but is there anything that you want to add, or will you follow up with the individual?
Certainly, um, absolutely. The, the comment about the increased revenue uh, i- is a bit, well, maybe less not fully informed. Uh, there, there was a comment about the fact that the revenues seem to be jumping up quite a bit next year on, when you look at it over a trend. And, and that's, i- if you look closely, you'll see happening on the restricted side of the budget. And the reason it's happening on the restricted side of the budget is we can't recognize the S R three revenues until we spend them. And since we're spending a large portion, a portion of the S R three revenues next year, that's what's pumping up the total general fund revenue next year. It has to do with revenue recognition and, and generally accepted accounting principles.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second question is for the general audience, will you please explain Fund seventeen?
Absolutely. Fund seventeen is, is a fund that the board has, has used to designate funds that it sets aside for, to meet the reserve for economic uncertainty. So it's, it's like a savings account with money that the board can use to soften the cushion when we enter difficult economic times or times of uncertainty. It provides the board with time to make uh, you know, judgment and decisions that are in the best interest of students, rather than having to make knee-jerk reactions every time there's a change in the state's economic condition that impacts us directly and immediately.
So what happens now that Sacramento is almost final? What gets presented to the board and in what, in what timeframe? And will there be a new fiscal recovery plan that the board would approve? Because we're gonna approve something tonight, but something else is gonna come back and what is that process?
You, you bring up a great point and, and one of the things, so a- as we know, what we, what we're adopting tonight is based on the information provided us by the uh, governor in the May revision. But we also know that just a couple of days ago, two days ago, to be exact, the state and legislature agreed on terms, but those terms have, the language of those terms haven't been published. So we know in broad terms that there's gonna be a little more cola than, than what's in this budget that you're adopting tonight. We also know there's some other uh, funding sources, some that have flexibility and some that don't that we need to discuss. And so uh, it, it, to kind of follow good governance, the next step would be for me to bring back what the actual mathematical outcome of those funding sources are and to discuss with the board and take direction on uh, issues like, would we like to lessen the amount of money that we're planning to transfer out of Fund seventeen to make up the shortfall? Right, you know, right now in this current plan, it's fourteen million dollars for twenty two, twenty three. If, you know, with the increased revenue in the current year, we could, we could lower that amount. Uh, so that would be an option. Obviously, every dollar we keep in the general fund uh, from increased revenues could potentially lower the, or reduce the amount of our solvency plan on a dollar-for-dollar basis looking forward. But there's not enough new money to completely wipe out the need for the district solvency plan that's being adopted along with this budget tonight.
So just once again, to clarify, you're gonna come back with something else, and what is the timeframe of that?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I didn't answer that last part of your question. Um, we would be coming back at the beginning of August. I, I will send an update to all stakeholders in the Friday memo on what the mathematical revenue changes are as soon as we have the language from the state, just so it's public and all stakeholders are aware of what it is. But we will come back here at the first board meeting in August and do the forty-five day revision and take direction from the board on how they would best like to handle the shift in revenues. I, of course, will make recommendations in that regard, but follow your direction.
And I'm sorry, I'm gonna just have to ask one more clarifying question just for everybody. The county needs to approve that.
Correct. The county is, is still providing oversight and review of our financial situation.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? And then when we do speak, let us speak a little louder into the mic so people can uh, hear and be clear. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm waiting till you recognize me, sir. Thank you very much. Um, my first couple of questions are for Dr. Hurst. Dr. Hurst, have I requested a balanced budget from you and your staff? have I requested a balanced budget from you and your staff?
Yes, sir, you have.
Dr. Hurst, when is the first time you recall me requesting a balanced budget from you and your staff?
If memory serves me correctly, uh, we were still having meetings in Obama Elementary School. So that would have been right about the time when I first got here as superintendent.
Am I final question is we're doing for questions this evening, is that correct?
Four.
Thank you. My final question is is this a balanced budget? I'm gonna let Dr. McIntyre best answer that question.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Thank you, Trustee Phillips. Uh, a- as written, this is not a completely balanced budget. There's a uh a fairly significant structural deficit being filled by a fourteen million dollar transfer from Fund fourteen. However, when we, when we I I think you'll find at the forty-five day revision, when we recognize the additional cash that the administration and the legislature are putting on the table will be much closer to that ideal.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst, and thank you, Dr. McIntyre.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Are there any other questions? Or comments? All right, so Trustee Smith Fole. Yeah.
My question is, Dr. McIntyre, when are we going to see solvency plans that have options, right? That have specific options in them that say this is a solvency plan if you cut because you, we all know that we have to, the twenty-six million that we talked about, it's cutting people, right? So but what people, which people, how close to the classroom? Where, when are we going to see those options being brought to the board about here's an option, but this is option A, if it looks like if you cut this many staff, right? Or if you cut this many teachers, or if you align to enrollment, this is option B. If you cut this consultant, if you cut this contract, if you cut this program, this is option C. If you blend all of that, this is option D. That's completely moonshot thinking. This is option E. When is the board going to see those options in the budget and in the solvency plans that you bring forward? That's my first question.
Thank you, Trustee Smith Foles. Uh, very, very timely question. The 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 real appropriate, the most appropriate time to really start digging into that conversation would be right after uh the the first I believe Wednesday in October, what we call the seabeds day, when we take our student snapshot. Because then when we see what what we're, what what the current year's enrollment is doing to our enrollment trend, which would, because, for example, if we see a bunch of students roll back into our system, well, that obviously makes us can make us believe that our enrollment trend is is going to stop pitching down. It might pitch the other direction and or at least go flatten out. And so that which would change our financial position tremendously. And so we would want to wait till after the first week in October, we have those enrollment numbers uh to really see what that impact is. And then I can start bringing uh, you know, snapshots of all of the staff that are being charged to S R of the fifty-six million dollars we're talking about. That's about twenty-six million dollars. And of the non-staff expenditures, which is the remaining roughly thirty million dollars.
Thank you for that. And my second question is, how do we reconcile the idea or the vote that we just had with the LCAP, right? The LCAP just got voted through. And we see in the LCAP, it's we need to hire, 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 people, 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 people. This is who we need to hire. How do we reconcile having to hire so many people because we need those positions filled with the idea of people also with the solvency plan that we have in front of us, people also will have to be cut? How do you reconcile both of those things? That's question number two.
Um, I just want to clarify the question. Uh, you're asking if it, how do we reconcile the increased number of people being charged to the LCAP with the fact that we need to make cuts in the solvency plan?
With the solvency plan that we have in front of us, and this is just clarification, with the solvency plan that we have that we've been talking about, this one plan that we've been talking about. The one plan that we've been talking about has a heavy hand in, okay, of it's soon, they're going to have to be cuts, right? And the cuts in this district mean people. So how do you reconcile a plan that says we have to have people to move these plans? Goal one, goal two, goal three, or all people, central people, heavy recruitment, retention, hiring, all of this is right here. We have to have that to push these LCAP goals forward, which is what the district's intention is, is to make these to actualize all these LCAP goals. How do you reconcile having that as something that has to be done with the idea that this too has to be done, with with which what what we're hearing, this too would have to be done? Now, for me, you reconcile that with making your budget reflect your value, right? So if we value people and people need to push the district forward, then that's the last people that we cut are people, right? We may cut other things, but the last thing we cut is people. How as a CBO or how as the one who presents these budgets to us, how do you reconcile those two things?
Well, strategically, one of the uh kind of top line initiatives that we we would likely be talking about very soon as as a as a team would be the idea of how many people that are currently being charged to S R might be good fits to do the work in the LCAP. So there's a, you know, to where there's the right people in the right places, are there opportunities to see a tra, you know, crosswalk or a transition? Uh, there there's a lot of variables involved in that, but to the extent that that that, you know, we can ensure we can operationalize our plan and not be growing in one area while we're cutting in another, you know, where there where there is true overlap, uh, that we need to be real thoughtful about that. Um, you know, right now, we've we're we've worked hard to meet the the compliance hurdle. It, we, you know, with the budget development and with the with the county uh, and to try to stay in front of that. But now we have the very real, you know, operational reality as as the board has all been talking about tonight about meeting our staffing needs and and so yeah, I don't think it's it's a, you know, kind of a throw the baby out with the bathwater sort of scenario. I think we have to be very thoughtful in how we engage around this and seeing where we can find those those synergies and those crosswalks uh and 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 keep, you know, keep our best players in front of children.
Thank you very much. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right, thank you. And so now Trustee Recker.
So my comment is that this plan requires that the board walk lockstep for a number of years. It's a fiscal solvency plan over a number of years. So I just want to make sure that people understand that that that's what's baked into what we see today. Now, it's likely to change. You know. There's money coming. Believe me, it's not as much as you think it is or as much as you want, but it's gonna, it it, there is no silver bullet that's coming from Sacramento um at this moment. So the board has to hold hands and recognize what's in this plan right now is something that the board has to commit to. And that's it.
Okay. Clerk does not respond.
Thank you, President Christian. Um, since we don't see any more, hence I'll move to adopt the WSUSD twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget as presented.
All right, is it been moved? Second? Is there a second?
Reckler will second.
All right, so the second Recker, comments? Uh, Trustee Phillips?
Before I begin, sir, um and I really appreciate that you brought back the four questions. They worked before. I'm glad everybody's following you. Um, are you, do you have a limit on the comments as well? I just want to make sure I'm following your direction. All you have to do is tell me. You tell me a minute. I'll give you a minute. You tell me two, I'll give you two. Just tell me.
Uh, limit on comments for everybody.
No comments?
Yeah, you have comments. Yeah.
Would you like to give me a time limit?
Not to be long-winded. Yeah. That's a two.
Thank you very much. There's no reason that this budget could not have been balanced today. The only reason that this budget is not balanced today is because as a board, we were not able to make the hard decisions. Since I've been on this board, I have voted no on every budget except one. And the budget I voted yes for was the budget that we began right in the middle of COVID or the very beginning of COVID. And I voted yes for that budget because I realized that this district and basically every other district and governmental agency was going to be deficit spending because it was a global emergency. We are no longer in the same situation. We are no longer in an emergency. But we have decided to use the backdrop of the pandemic to continue um basically out of control spending. And that is not something that I can support. So I will be voting no on this budget, just like before other budgets are voted no on. Uh, I do support the solvency plan. And I will be, when the time comes, voting to support that. But I wanted a balanced budget. I asked for it, and this is not balanced. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Clerk does not respond.
Thank you, President Christian. Um, I just want to thank uh Dr. McIntyre and your staff, Dr. Hurst, for bringing us the budget today. Um, I know it has not been an easy year, and I see few years uh this year specifically. I know it feels even longer. Um, so I just want to say thank you, uh, Dr. uh, Dr. McIntyre. I know you came in halfway through the year. Um, so I appreciate it. Uh, I know that we have tough decisions coming up. Um, I uh disagree with my colleague. I don't think that it's easy to just make a balanced budget with our deficit and the needs that we have in our schools. Um, so even getting us here, I know it was a a lot of sweat and tears. Um, and we have more to come. Uh, and I am thankful to the state that they are bringing at least some uh support through funding. Uh, hopefully we'll see more. Um, and I know next year we'll have some tough conversations. We do have to unite. Um, I do hope that the rhetoric with from our our board changes as a team. Uh, because we cannot continue to be divided. We're going to have those tough conversations next year. But just want to finish with thank you uh to the budget team for bringing us to this place.
Trustee Smith Foles?
I think that one of the reasons why this is a difficult vote for me is because I don't think that there was um enough community outline and engagement around the budget. I think we did have some, and I thank you for that. I think we did have some um community engagement around the budget. I think that it was a high level, and I think that there needs to be more um clean, clear-cut way of speaking to the to the district uh education stakeholders about the budget and where we are and what we actually have and how we want to spend that as the community. I do believe that a budget reflects the value in the district. I believe that wholeheartedly. I believe that um that that plays out. When we don't reflect, when we don't reflect how we spend our money to what our values and our mission and our core beliefs are, then it becomes a little disjointed. I think that this district has the ability to align what we value with what we spend our money on. I really believe that this district has the ability to do that. I think that though that's going to take real transparent and hard conversations. I think that uh Dr. Hurst being the leader in the district that that's going to require some tough conversations about this is what we value. So this is what we have to put our money to. And when we move it here, then it something else goes away. So how do we then turn around and keep that a different way, right? How do we think outside the box? How do we use moonshot thinking when we may not have the money, right? I think that this is the prime opportunity in this district to be creative, to be um to be aware, to be flexible, to be to be the district that, again, we say we value on paper. Um, I think, again, the budget has to reflect that. So I think um Dr. McIntyre, an example of valuing and the money reflecting that, for example, is when we talk about the older adult programming, how we are ensuring that it's not just one year that it's funded, but that that's a line item that it's funded uh permanently.
Trustee Smith Fole? Yeah, we got a few times up.
So if we could, if we are going to two-minute comments, President Christian, if we could put a timer up for trustees too, because I don't have, I'm not looking at a timer. I'm not looking at the phone. So if we could do that, that would better ensure that we are um, I'm able to pace myself when I am speaking. So we have that ability. If we have that ability, that would be great.
Yeah, we'll put a time limit on it and the staff would do it um the time on the timer. All right, any other comments? Uh, Dr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, our our fiscal advisor assigned by the county, Javeta Cleveland, uh, has a couple of comments she'd like to make as well, if if that's acceptable to the president.
But yes, go ahead.
Yes, um, I strongly recommend that the board approves this budget. Um, the fiscal recovery plan um is a part of the budget. Um, the board has a responsibility to approve a budget for next school year so that the district can support um student programs and services. Um, if the district does not have an approved budget, the um Contra Costa County Superintendent of Schools will have to develop a budget which may not support all the district's needs for the next school year. So I just want to reiterate that I strongly recommend that the board approve the budget.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll go to the vote. And the correct order, what deny was uh, Trustee Phillips?
On principle, no.
Uh, Trustee? Clerk does not respond.
Goncalo, so yes.
Uh, Trustee uh, Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
All right. Uh, Trustee Smith Fole?
Smith Foles, yes.
All right. And myself a yes. And budget is adopted. E three? Dr. Hurst?
We're going to turn it over to Ms. Martin.
Good evening, board, families, community and staff. I'm going to be presenting to you the single plan for student achievement, our SPSAs for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I am asking the board to approve the following SPSAs. Downer, Hales, Highland, Middle College, Montauvin, Murphy, Penole Middle, Richmond High, Sheldon and Washington. The remaining SPSAs will be brought to the board for review and approval at a subsequent meeting. There are many that will be brought forward to our July thirteenth meeting as well. Next slide. The SPSA is a document that represents a school's cycle of continuous improvement for student achievement. The annual process for of developing, reviewing, and updating the SPSA includes a comprehensive review of data and the development of actions necessary to achieve school goals. In essence, the SPSA is a school's blueprint to improve the academic performance of all students. Next slide, please. Right, um, why do we, why do schools need an SPSA? Regulatory compliance? Schools must develop an SPSA when the school operates Title One Programs, Education Code sixty-one, sixty-four, zero, zero, one. Or the district determines that schools must complete an SPSA, or the school has been identified for comprehensive support and improved the school has been identified for comprehensive support and improvement, also known as CSI. Best practice is a continuous cycle of improvement. You analyze data, identify strengths, areas of growth, plan and implement action services, and then further analyze data and so on. Next slide, please. The 2223 SPSA and West Contra Costa Unified School District Vision and Goals. The SPSAs were guided by the newly developed Instructional Focus Plan, which is really focused on early literacy and college and career, things that are already outlined in our LCAP. Our LCAP Accountability Control Plan describes metrics and action services to meet district goals. Our SPSA connects school goals, metrics, and action services expenditures to the LCAP. And our grade-level department, level groups design specific plans for implementation of actions and services in the SPSA. Next slide. Goals from the Instructional Focus Plan, the LCAP, and the SPSA align to achieving students, thriving employees, and caring schools. Next slide, please. The best practices for a sequence of SPSA work: review data to determine what worked well for students and what didn't work well from past year. Identify needs for upcoming year. Identify metrics to measure success. Develop goals to address needs. Design action steps to meet goals during upcoming year and fund the actions and services to meet goals. Next slide, please. The SPSA, the overview of the SPSA and the introduction pages. The SPSA begins with a section that provides foundational information about the school community, as then focuses on purpose and description, school-wide components. Next slide, please. It also then has the actions and services page, which you can see here. It has actions to support goal, the timeline, the student subgroup, who's responsible for this particular goal, the description, and then obviously the proposed expenditures. Next slide, please. The role of the SSC, our school site council. The SSC shall collaborate on the content and development of the SPSA. The SPSA shall be reviewed annually and updated, including proposed expenditure of funds allocated to the school through the CON app and the Local Control and Accountability Plan, if any, by the SSC Education Code 64001I. The SPSA shall be reviewed and approved by the governing board at a regularly scheduled meeting wherein there are material changes. Next slide, please. Role of English Learner Advisory Council, ELAC. Each California public school grades kindergarten through 12 with 21 or more English learners must form an ELAC, an English Learner Advisory Committee. Responsibilities: advising the principal and staff in the development of a site plan for English learners and submitting the plan to the school site council for consideration of inclusion in the school's site plan. Number two, assisting in the development of the school-wide needs assessment. Number three, identifying ways to make parents aware of the importance of regular school attendance. Number four, each ELAC shall have the opportunity to elect at least one member to the multilingual District English Learner Advisory Committee, also known as MDAC. Next slide, please. The role of African-American Parent Advisory Council, APAC, is to meet with the site administrator and review the African-American student frame in the SPSA. Advise the principal in the development of a site plan to support African-American Black students and submission of the plan to the school site council for consideration of inclusion in the school site plan for student achievement. Review data and trends pertaining to the achievement of African-American students. Ensure there are resources dedicated to African-American students and review the data. Five, support with planning a family night for the APAC and family-friendly walkthroughs at the school site. Assisting in the development of school-wide needs assessment and elect a delegate to the district's African-American site advisory team. Next slide. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And now we go to questions. Are there questions? I don't see any questions. Trustee Smith-Foel.
How many SPSAs that are being voted on tonight are Title I? I couldn't get the entire list down if you were saying this morning.
Trustee Smith-Foel, could you repeat your question? I could not hear you.
Yes, ma'am. When you were reading off the name of the school sites that would be voted on tonight, the plans that would be voted on tonight, of those, how many of them are Title I schools?
Really, there are 35 Title I schools, but we can pull it up to be exact, but I believe there's 35 Title I schools.
Yeah, there's 36 Title I schools, but of the Title I schools that we have, how many of you listed out about 10 schools that we're voting on tonight that you're bringing the plans forward? Of those 10, how many of those are Title I schools? That's my question.
Got it. We're going to pull that up for you.
Thank you.
Do you want to go to your next question? And I'll come back and answer that question for you.
Thank you so much. How many schools lack an ELAC? How many schools of the 56 schools that we have, how many do not have an ELAC?
I was hoping that, oh, she is here. Ms. Reynolds, do you have an answer for that?
I am looking at that right now.
And Ms. Reynolds, part of that question is how many lack an APAC too? Same question. How many lack an ELAC? How many lack an APAC?
So APACs are under OASIA, but so I can't answer that off the top of my head. I keep a list of found compliant ELACs, but APACs is with John and Will and OASIA.
Thank you. I'll take the ELAC data if you have it.
Are there any other questions?
I'm still, President Christian, I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for the information from the questions that I asked. I asked how many SPSAs being voted on tonight are Title I? That was the first question. Ms. Reynolds is getting me the information about how many schools lack an ELAC. Those are two questions. The third question, if you would like me to pause or just to keep going, Ms. Martin, my third question is, what have you found to be barriers to other plans coming forward? What have you found to be some of the barriers to having all the plans come forward or the to having some of the plans come forward? We have 56 schools and we have 10 plans.
Okay, trustee Smith-Foel, eight out of the 10 are Title I schools. So the only two schools that are not Title I are Middle College and Highland.
Okay.
Which are before you today.
Thank you so much. And then the
We have 30 ELACs, and there are two sites that do not require ELACs.
Thank you so much for that. And then, Ms. Martin, thank you both for those answers. Ms. Martin, the last question I asked was, what are some of the barriers that you have found that prevent the SPSAs to become, to come forward? In a timely manner, we have 10 out of 56. What have you found?
I think part of it is that the timeline was changed. So around November, the timeline was changed just because of the number of SPSAs that were not done, and the school year had already started, and that had been past practice for SPSAs to roll over. There was a desire to actually stop that practice, to have SPSAs come to the board before the school year ended, before you started the new school year. So at the conclusion of one school year before you start the next one, which is normal process. And so I think part of that was the challenge, just switching the timeline and really realizing we were going to try and hold to that timeline. There was also a shift in staffing, so we had to change some processes. So Maureen Traheal used to be the coordinator of family and community engagement. We then hired Shakira Reynolds, so there was some passing of the torch and some resystem alignment. So I think that was part of it. I think the other part was definitely just the recruitment of parents for SSC and ELAC. And so what we found in many cases is not that SPSA document was not completed, but that there was not compliant SSCs and ELACs, or that the APACs were not necessarily formed at all, that there was representation in every single school site. So and and I'm not sure if that was a complete understanding from all principals. And so I believe that those are part of the challenges. You know, understanding that this year also was a year in which we were in COVID, so you know, in terms of recruitment of parents, I believe this was definitely a challenge for school sites. There are more schools that are actually almost done, and we should be bringing them forward in July. But I think it's just changing practice, honestly. This has not been practiced to bring them before the school year starts.
Thank you so much. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right. Any other question? Motion?
President Christian, I'll move that we approved the 2223 SPSAs for the 10 schools listed.
All right, it's been moved. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, is there a second?
Clerk Little Second.
Second by trustee Reckler? Any comments? Trustee Reckler?
I would like to thank everybody who got an SPSA in. This was a brutal year. There wasn't a lot of staffing. There was a second job with COVID, and I'm deeply appreciated of the people who were able to get their plans in. It actually it's a preference that it be done so that contracts can be approved and you can get set up and have things ready to go for the following year. You know, I think it's a work in progress, but I'm deeply appreciate, appreciative of all the efforts that were put in. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Trustee Smith-Foel?
Thank you. I believe that it is imperative that we understand that SPSAs are dependent on functioning SSCs, right? And SSCs are dependent on parent engagement and ensuring that they have the right makeup so they can then be a monitor, a monitoring system over the money that's spent at sites. It is absolutely crucial that we have functioning, well-run SSCs, so the SPSAs that come before the board have been vetted by the community and by the parents. President Christian, I still need a timer put up. I'm complete. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other com, not? We go to the vote. All right, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
All right. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
Right. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
All right, thank you. Trustee Smith-Foel?
Trustee Smith-Foel, sustained.
All right. And myself, a yes. The motion passes. Now we'll move to
President Christian. I would like to make a motion that we extend the meeting until we finish all action items and the consent item poll. Just to clarify, that's a motion not including the discussion items. All action items and the consent item poll, but not the discussion items.
All the action, okay. Go ahead. Trustee Phillips?
Mr. Gonzalez-Hoy, I'm going to second your motion.
All right. So until we move on.
It's not a debatable motion because it sets our time to adjourn. However, we do still need to have a vote on it.
All right.
So you would go straight to the vote, Mr. President.
All right. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
All right. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Smith-Foel?
Clarification on the motion is to, President Christian, can you clarify the motion again, please? Can you state it?
What was that? Wait, in the vote? We just need to know.
Right, we're in the middle of the vote, so this is not a time, the only thing we can do right now is vote. We cannot make changes to the motion.
I'm just asking for the motion to restate it. Can we ask for the motion to be restated, so I'm clear about what I'm voting on?
Yes, absolutely.
President Christian, could you please restate?
Motion on the table is to extend the meeting until we finish all action items, including item C5, which is a consent item that was pulled.
Thank you. Smith-Foel, no.
All right. And as, yes. Motion passes. And move on. E4.
Mr. Freeze?
Yes, tonight we're asking the board to accept the Contra Costa County Office of Education Third Quarterly Report for 2122 for the Williams Settlement Litigation, and this is for January through March. There were no findings. There were no instructional materials reported, school facilities, school accountability report card was not reported, teacher misalignments, and no uniform complaints during this period.
Are there any comment, questions? Trustee Phillips?
I have no questions. Sorry, I was going to move the item when you're ready.
Motion?
I move that we accept the third quarter of the report for 2122 Williams Settlement Legislation from the Contra Costa County Office of Ed.
All right. Thank you. It's been moved by trustee Phillips, and is there a second?
I'll second, President Christian.
All right, second. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, and comments? All right, and we go to the vote. All right, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Smith-Foel?
Smith-Foel, yes.
Thank you, and myself, a yes. All right, motion carries, and now we will go on to E5. Yes.
Thank you, President Christian. Colleagues, President Christian asked me to read the next part. The community, this is the public hearing on the sunshine of the initial proposals for the School Supervisor Association IFPT Local 21 and the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Tonight, this district board will conduct a public hearing on the initial proposals of the School Supervisor Association IFPT Local 21 and the district pursuant to the sunshine requirements of California Government Code Section 3547. During the public hearing, the focus will be on gathering, the gathering of input from the public, including other employees and parents regarding the initial bargaining proposal being presented. The purpose of this meeting is to inform the public about the topics of negotiations between the district and the School Supervisor Association IFPT Local 21. Tonight's meeting will proceed as following. First, the board will open the public hearing. Second, Conrad Tenasich Chuck, I'm so sorry, Conrad. The Director of Labor Relations and our district negotiator will be given 10 minutes to make a presentation to the board regarding the initial proposals from the School Supervisor Association IFPT Local 21 and the district. Third, upon the conclusion of the Director of Labor Third, upon the conclusion of the Director of Labor Relations' presentation, the Board President will take public comment on this item. The total time for a comment from each participant will be limited to one minute. The total time allotted for all public comments on this matter is fifteen minutes. Fourth, board members may ask clarifying questions to district staff for, as stated by the Board President. The public hearing will be then closed. At this time, the Board President will open the public hearing on the initial proposal of the School Supervisor Association IFPT Local Twenty-One and the district. We invited Director of Labor Relations to make a presentation as noted above after hearing the hammer from the president.
All right. At this moment, we will open the public, uh, comment. Presentation.
Thank you very much, President Christian, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, trustees, Dr. Hurst, and public. We're here today to accept public comment and approve receipt of the initial bargaining proposals from the School Supervisors Association IFPT Local Twenty-One and West Contra Costa Unified School District. Pursuant to Educational Employment Relations Act, the initial proposals to be negotiated by the school district and labor union must be submitted at a public hearing of the governing board, the initial proposals of the West Contra Costa Unified School District to the School Supervisors Association IFPT Local Twenty-One, along with the initial proposals from the School Supervisors Association IFPT Local Twenty-One to West Contra Costa Unified School District, at which time the public is allowed to comment on these proposals. This is part of the sunshining process that must be completed prior to entering into contract negotiations. Once an agreement is reached with each unit, the agreement will be reviewed by Contra Costa County Office of Education until the requirements of AB twelve hundred and then brought to the board for ratification. These proposals are for a success agreement between the School Supervisors Association IFPT Local Twenty-One and West Contra Costa Unified School District's current one-year collective bargaining agreement that was in effect from July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, there's been much discussions about memos of understanding, or MOUs, which are entered in to address specific one-time, short-term issues such as changes in normal working conditions, which are subject to the collective bargaining. These proposals are not related to any current or future MOU. It's important to the public to understand that the district and School Supervisors Association IFPT Local Twenty-One are currently addressing conditions impacting programs, but these conditions or contract negotiations presented tonight are not connected in any way to those discussions, and public comment should be limited to the terms that are being sunshine and not directed toward any current MOUs. The recommendation is that both WCCUSD and the School Supervisor Association IFPT Local Twenty-One post, post the initial proposals which have been done and receive comment on the initial proposals along with receipt of the submitted proposals. As indicated before, the financial impact is yet to be determined upon the results of negotiations, and any fiscal impact will need to be disclosed through AB twelve hundred procedure prior to the ratification of the school board. At this particular time, I'd like to review and discuss the School Supervisors Association IFPT Local Two propose to negotiate the following articles. Article three, salary and salary schedule. Article four, hiring promotions, and article five, benefits. The union reserves the right to open other articles as needed during negotiations. WCCUSD's initial proposals presented to the School Supervisor Association IFPT Local Twenty-One include, but are not limited to, article one point one, recognition. Article three, work schedule. Article three point one, salary. Article five, benefits. Article six, suspension, demotion, or dismissal. Article eight, evaluation. And article ten, agreement. The district also reserves the right to open other articles as needed during the negotiations and exchange proposals at the bargaining table. The district also reserves the right to add, amend, or delete proposals during contract negotiations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now open for public comment. One minute, please.
There is no public comment at this time.
All right. There's no public comment. Then we move towards questions from the board. Motion? All right. We close the public hearing. And now, okay, let me close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Now we go to the motion. Is there a motion? No motion. No motion.
I will move the item.
Okay. Uh, trustee Reckler?
So I will, I will move receipt, sorry, of the initial, the initial bargaining proposals from the School Supervisor Association IFPT Local Two and West Contra Costa Unified School District. I think that's all I have to say.
Okay. All right. The, trustee Phillips, and then we'll come back to clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
I second the motion.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I was going to second the motion, uh, and, and make a quick change that it's local twenty-one, not two, just in case that affects anything.
Okay, let me restate that. It does say in here that it's two. You're right, it is twenty-one. Okay, so with that amendment, that it's local twenty-one.
All right. So it's been moved by trustee Phillips and seconded by clerk-
Point of order, it was moved by trustee Reckler and seconded by trustee Phillips.
Okay. Trustee Reckler, it was moved by trustee Reckler and seconded by trustee Phillips. All right. Now to the comments. All right. We go to the vote. All right. Trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
Right. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Smith Foll?
Smith Foll, yes.
Thank you. And myself, a yes. And the motion carries. Now we go to E six.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We're asking for approval of the Associate Superintendent or Chief Business Officer's contract for Dr. Robert McIntyre. Approval of the contract includes an increase in base salary from the Associate Superintendent of Business Service position, and I want to make a correction. It says eighteen thousand. However, that should read twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-two annually, placed on step four of applicable management salary schedule of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred annually, plus full payment of employee and spouse life insurance policies and all standard management benefits, including health, welfare, and stipends. So we are asking for approval. And I do turn it over to the Board President for question.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions? Trustee Reckler?
Yes, we received public comment, and if somebody could please refresh my memory, did we, did we change the salary schedule for this? Or is that something that's going to happen? I cannot recall this.
The- Sorry, go ahead. The, the attorney, uh, in submitting this item, uh, to Dr. Hurst and the team was supposed to include the adjustment to the salary schedule line on the, on the management salary schedule as, as attached to this. So it, it, it would be in line with the, the foundation and form of the existing salary schedule and that each step on the, on the salary schedule has a two percent differential from year to year, from step one to five, and, and this salary would represent step four on that salary schedule.
So what's on the website will get updated?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right. Need a motion, uh, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you, President Christian. I move for approval of the employment contract with Associate Superintendent slash CBO, Dr. Robert McIntyre.
Reckler will second.
All right. Move by clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, seconded by trustee Reckler. Uh, any comments? Now we go to the vote. Uh, all right. Go ahead. Trustee Phillips?
We are, and I'm speaking for myself, but I think that based on how I think this motion is, is going to come out, I think people feel the same way. Um, Dr. McIntyre, uh, we were really blessed, I'll just put it that way, uh, that he came here temporarily and decided to stay. Um, in order for us to move this district forward, we have to continue to put people in the positions, uh, that can, uh, help move this district forward. And we have, uh, you know, for example, a new Sopa director, we have a new CBO, we have a new superintendent, we have a new chief academic officer, so there's a team that's being built out. And if we want to see things different in this district, uh, the truth of the matter is, uh, the people who do the work, those are the people that we're going to have to build up. Uh, because when this meeting is over, I'm not going to go to work at summer school tomorrow, and I'm not going to go to work tomorrow at the district office. None of us are. And so Dr. McIntyre and really all of the employees that are actually doing the work day in and day out, thank you, but particularly for Dr. McIntyre, he made a recommendation to us a few months ago, and we ignored him. But we're about to give him a salary increase because of his expertise. I tell people as an attorney all the time, if you're going to pay me, listen to my advice. If you are going to pay me, listen to my advice. We are paying that man a lot of money because he is the only financial expert in this room. So the next time he tells us that we need me to make cuts, listen, because you're paying for that advice. Thank you, Dr. McIntyre. Those are my comments.
All right. Thank you. And now we go to the vote. All right. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Reckler?
Welcome aboard. Reckler, yes.
All right. Uh, Smith Foll?
Thank you for all you do, uh, Dr. McIntyre. Smith Foll, it's Danes.
All right. And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Items C, C five?
Ms. Logan.
May I, uh, speak since I pulled this item, President Christian? That is the tradition of the board. The person who pulls the item may speak. May I speak?
Uh, go ahead. Trustee Smith Foll, I'm sorry.
I pulled item C five for a couple of reasons. I had the pleasure of speaking with Ms. Logan about uh, this item and having her explain it to me a little bit more, and I would like to give that same privilege to the community, especially since we lack the opportunity to hear from community because we've taken away public comment after the presentation. So Ms. Logan, as a way of you speaking to the community, I have a couple of, uh, questions about this. One, could you speak to the money source where this funding is coming from? And then the second question I had about this, uh, for discussion is we know that there is a high need in our special ed classes for them to have this, um, these projectors also, especially that some of our special ed classes in high school, they use things like unique learning system that is, uh, reliant on having a good projector. Can you tell me how we are addressing those particular classes with this allocation? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um.
Sure. Good evening. Thank you, trustee Smith Foll, for the questions. So first, I want to just start by saying that this project came to be, um, a couple of years ago when we were surveying and talking with teachers about, um, needs in the classroom, and it really came down to access for students, students having the ability to see clearly the images on the screen. Um, and the results of our survey show that at least forty-five percent of teachers report that students don't have the ability to see clear images on the screen. So, so there's that fact. There's also the fact that the majority of our classroom projectors are approaching end of life in most of our classrooms. So based on that, we've continued to survey teachers and conduct a pilot this year to see what is the best solution that meets student access and engagement needs as well as teachers', um, uh, teaching needs. And the results of that has been the Promethean boards. We do have, uh, five million dollars set aside in ESAR funds for this project, and this is just the beginning of the project. We're taking it slow and thoughtfully because we want to make sure that we choose the right tool. We also want to make sure that we're being very mindful of cost. So what you see before you is essentially an extended pilot to put additional Promethean boards in eight elementary schools to have teachers, they are boards that are on wheels, so they move around. They can be moved to various classrooms. Uh, we'll do observations and get input from students and teachers about the experience. There's various pieces of hardware that, that are included that could be reduced if they're not needed. So again, being mindful of cost, um, over the long run. And the intention is for general education classrooms as well as special education classrooms. So we're approaching elementary students and kind of the developmental level of students, uh, younger students versus older students, um, but all students.
Thank you so much. So there is a very clear acknowledgement that, uh, classes, our ESN classes will have to have these projectors or will have to have a way of ensuring that our special ed students are able to engage with, um, the curriculum that we have, and one way is to make sure that they have the necessary tools, and a one, a clear projector is a necessary tool for that engagement. There is an acknowledgement of that. Thank you. And I just wanted to repeat again that this was, uh, money set aside from ESAR, ESAR funds. That's what, uh, the district is using for this extended pilot program. Is that correct?
Correct. One-time ESAR funds.
Thank you so much. President Christian, I am complete.
All right. Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you, President Christian. Uh, good evening, Ms. Logan. Thank you for bringing this item forward. I have two questions for you. Um, first one, my understanding is that there are already a few sites that have been piloting or using Promethean boards? I've always been very jealous of them, by the way. Um, and, uh, why are we not just transitioning to all sites if we've already started piloting at some schools?
Great question. Um, for a couple of reasons, and yes, you're right. There's, there are a sprinkling of Promethean boards throughout the district that have been purchased over the years. Most recently, though, there are three sites that have used site dollars to purchase Promethean boards. They are Verdi, Chavez, and Montalban. And they have nearly enough boards to be school-wide. Um, they will starting this August. So the reason that we're not going district-wide it right now is really two reasons. One, to be thoughtful about the money and the cost, to be sure we're not buying additional components that we don't necessarily need. So that's part of the evaluation of this extended pilot. additional components that we don't necessarily need. So that's part of the evaluation of this extended pilot. The other is to really learn from those three schools in terms of implementation. Technology is awesome. It can be fabulous. It's all about the way it's being taken up and adopted and used and the training and support available for teachers to really use it maximally. So we want to learn from the three schools, um, as we build this out.
Thank you very much. Uh, you answered my second question actually in your comments, so that's it.
Motion? All right, motion?
President Christian, I'll move item C five for approval.
All right. Been moved. Is there a second?
Reckler will second.
Second, trustee Reckler? All right, comment? Not. We go to the vote.
Thank you, President Christian. I did have one quick comment. As long and thank you, I, I actually really appreciate your intention on the technology and being really thoughtful of the transition, if that is the way we wanted to go. Um, it is so, um, you know, it's the old way of just buying one thing for everybody, right? So I, I really appreciated the answer to me on, on why are we just not transitioning everyone? It's like the same question about curriculum, right? Why are we just not buying? So, so I, I really do appreciate it. Um, I do think Promethean boards, uh, do offer the ability, uh, uh, for more learners in different ways. Um, so I'm really excited to see what these three schools say. Um, I will be really curious also, though, if there are potentially other options, uh, to pilot in the future. Uh, but thank you for bringing this forward.
All right, thank you. And now we go to the vote. Trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee, uh, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
Thank you. Uh, trustee, uh, Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Thank you. And myself, a yes. And it carries. The motion. Ten fourteen? We are adjourned at ten fourteen.